Welcome to tonight's meeting. It is a study session for March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
To reconsider the representative we have, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable. I took over as the representative because it had been a daytime meeting and that made it difficult for lots of other people. But now it is an evening meeting and we may ask the alternate if he wants to take over as the lead. Because I have a position that is different from the balance of council and I think our council would be better representative by someone who was agreement with the majority of council.
Anybody ready to answer that question or Mayor Protem?
Since I'm the alternate, if it's the majority's will, I would be willing to do it. I don't know what we would do for an alternate, but I think that I could cover those.
And it's the first Thursday of every month at six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
At six thirty, I have, I had to leave as alternate because of my Yappers meeting, my youth advisory panel that I'm liaison to. So first, is everybody okay with Mayor Protem being the key person back? Okay, and then you don't have to say tonight, but if somebody's interested in being the alternate, can you let me know so we can discuss it next week? Good?
And there may not be a meeting on the sixth of April.
Yeah.
Because there's a conflict with timelines and time schedules.
Right.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Just a question. I think either the clerk or the attorney could weigh in on this and that is, would we need to bring that appointment, change an appointment back to the council for official approval through a vote? Either on the consent agenda or as a new business item?
Thank you, Mr. Freytag. Dave Frankel, city attorney. I don't think that the council's representative to the noise roundtable has been a subject of resolution in the past.
Okay.
I think it's just consensus among council as to who they would like to represent them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for whenever they do, I've seen all of the emails today of trying to decide April's meeting, but Mayor Protem, you'll take care of that, whatever it is, and we will work this week on seeing if anybody can look at their calendars and see if they're free the first Thursday to be your alternate.
Yeah, and just because I don't know what's going to happen with it, but what was being suggested was April thirteenth, which if they land on April thirteenth, we, the whole council has a conflict, I assume, because that's the same night as the fire award. So I had told them in the last meeting if they had a meeting that night that we would probably participate.
Sounds good. I don't know who else had their, Councilor Namela.
I attended the Dr. Cog meeting last week and they had a representative from the Department of Housing giving an overview of the Prop one twenty-three. I'm just kind of curious if staff at some point would be interested in coming to us and just giving us some input on what they think would be the best path forward with respect to Prop one twenty-three. I think there's, having heard multiple presentations on this and there's still more to go as they develop the rules around the policy. You know, with respect to opportunities for funding for ownership projects, there's opportunities for homelessness efforts in addition to, you know, just the more typical rental multifamily options that, you know, most cities are looking at as well. I think there's opportunity there for us to look at and, you know, certainly with, if staff could look at the baseline and kind of give us an understanding of what that might mean. There's a lot of flexibility if you don't meet, I know, Councilor Seymour, you attended one of these info sessions. There's a lot of flexibility over if you don't meet the increase, the nine percent increase in the three-year timeline, you just kind of, you know, you do it until you can and you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have the funding availability for those years you're trying to play catch-up, but it could open us up to some opportunities. So I'm just kind of, you know, if, if we'd like to have, if there's interest, I mean, I'd love to have staff kind of come in and talk to us about it when they feel ready.
Yeah. Is there interest from the council?
Yes.
I think we all, I think we all need to hear about it at least to know what we think about it.
Okay, all right, we'll do.
Councilor Seymour?
Last week, I had an opportunity to attend the retirement send-off for Fire Lieutenant Sale. It was well done by the entire department as they always do, so I was appreciative of being able to attend that. And then on Wednesday, I was at Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation meeting and we had a great conversation about how, or a start of a conversation of how Westminster is dealing with construction defects and then also opportunities that we have for office in the new downtown. And so we had some inquiries directly from the board that day. Engineering firm, construction firm, and then local EDCs too that wanted more information. So I, I passed that along to the people that actually know what they're talking about. So Director Kimball got those contacts and is working on putting that together. So that was a positive connection as the EDC is, is meant to be as well. And then was a guest of the chamber on Thursday evening. A soft opening of the redesigned Lotos that, now we have to call it the old Lotos for a long time until everybody, the new name is Legacy Point at one hundred and fourth and Federal. So I appreciate the invitation to that. And they were looking forward to warm weather and they're the best patio in North Metro area to be open. So keep them on top of your mind for another reimagined local business. That was it.
Councilor Edmonds?
Yes, I attended the North Metro Arts Alliance last Thursday and they have a lot of great stuff that they're working on with the city. They are also working with Highland Hills. That's also another entity that's part of the group. But they, so it's Highland Hills, City of Westminster and Westminster Public Schools and North Metro Arts Alliance. And so in this, they gave updates and Highland Hills is beginning their wonderful Wednesdays in June. And then the city provided their update, which they have a ton going on. They have eighty-one planned events throughout, gosh, the next few months, six, seven months. So those have, will continue to come out in our activities guide. But some of the highlights that they have that are different this year is the placemaking neighborhood nights. So every Friday night they will have, through each month, they'll have it in different locations. So I think the first one is College Hill Library in the month of May and then it will transition to Historic Westminster and then it will transition to, gosh, I can't even remember now. There's so many different places. But so a lot of great placemaking events with our neighborhoods. And then the Catamounts will be coming back. They'll be featured at Metzger Farm. And then, let's see, oh, and then Westminster worked with Westminster Public Schools on creating traffic box reps. Those will be, there will be fifteen. They originally had thirteen planned, but there are so many great submissions that I think there was three hundred, yeah, three hundred and sixty-five submissions from students, which is a ton. And I guess that they are, they're, they were phenomenal and that's why they upped it from thirteen to fifteen. And we asked, well, why not all of traffic, traffic boxes? But they, obviously budget's a constraint. So they are working with Westminster Public Schools as well as North Metro Arts Alliance and they will have fifteen, by fifteen, traffic box reps by the end of the year. They're going through right now on the submissions and will be moving forward with the fifteen here in the next month or so. So really looking forward to that. Those are really exciting. And then the other new item was the Hardifax Pop-Up Museum. And Hardifax is a community-driven pop-up museum that celebrates Westminster's cultural diversity through treasured family heirlooms and everyday objects. So they're going to be pop-up museums throughout Westminster throughout the next couple of months. So really great happenings here. I'm really excited to be a part of these and really get to see different areas of the city and meet, you know, people where they're at. So this really stemmed from our strategic plan and staff did a really great job on meeting that expectation. So.
I attended on Wednesday the Legacy Foundation Board meeting and so they're just going through, still sorting out like their different committees and stuff and their deliverables for their main goals for the year. So just wanted to share that I did attend that this last week. And then that evening, just because I like to give them a plug, I did sit in on the WCPAA board meeting, which for those of you who don't know, that's the Board for Alumni Association for folks who go through the Citizen Academy that we have here. So they were talking through the things they're going to do for the year and it's been a while since I was able to visit them. So was able to sit through their meeting and a good, good meeting. And then this morning, I was honored to join some of you as the chief was sworn in. Now Chief Halbert being our permanent chief, so that was a really great event if you didn't get to attend and it was very well done and I was pleased to be able to be a part.
I too went to Legacy Point. Great food and well-priced. The atmosphere is terrific. You sit on one side. They also have a new space up for up to a hundred people, which will be great. And the upstairs wasn't, outside wasn't open yet, but that's always great up there. The retirement of firefighter Lieutenant Sale. I have worked with him for years in the Santa Cops program and he's the best. A little missing, but I'm hoping we still get to see him once in a while at Christmas time. Commuting Solutions was last week. That is businesses along the thirty-sixth corridor, two eighty-seven and one nineteen. And they come together to look at different ways that their employees can get to work. We had several different presentations. I gave one over what I've already talked about back in February. Our trip to DC and what we lobbied with on the raise grant, the twenty-five million there. But RTD gave a great presentation and in May, it looks like they will be rolling out their new fairs. And all's I can say is it's going to be wonderful. It's less complicated. It's set price. When I was still working downtown, I was paying a hundred and ninety dollars for a pass for a month to go on the bus and it's going down. to go on the bus, and it's going down to 88 is being recommended. And for seniors, open your ears wide, it's going to be at $27 for the month. Major, major. Also, the swearing-in this morning for Chief Halbert was wonderful. Great response on Facebook, people thrilled. This place was packed, and it just sorta gave you chills, because we just don't do that every day. So, congratulations, Chief Halbert. Anyone else? That brings us to, is there any questions anybody has for any of the agendas tonight before we get started? Seeing none, that brings us to, do we have reason for executive sessions?
Thank you, Mayor. There are two agendized study session agendas for the WIDA Board, and the first one is an executive session to discuss the proposed First Amendment to the amended and restated For Sale Development Agreement with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC for Block A4 West and Block A4 East, located at approximately 90th Avenue and Harlan Street in downtown Westminster, Block C7, located at approximately 92nd Avenue and Eaton Street in downtown Westminster, and Block A1, which is located at approximately 88th Avenue and Harlan Street in downtown Westminster. The executive session would be to instruct the authorities negotiators, as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and 7, as well as Colorado Revised Statute 246402, 4A and E1.
Go through these one by one for getting consensus?
Yeah, if you could consider each of the proposed exec sessions separately, thanks.
So, we have this executive session before us. I will poll you to see if you want to go into executive session and that you hold things confidential. Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Counselor Numala?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? Number two.
Thank you. The second proposed study session, agenda, exec session for WIDA is to discuss the possible sale of a WIDA-owned property on Block C7, located at approximately 92nd Avenue and Eaton Street in downtown Westminster, to Downtown Westminster Residences LLC, and to instruct the authorities negotiators, as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and 7, as well as Colorado Revised Statute 246402, 4A and E1.
I will poll council again to see if you want to go into executive session for this reason. Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Counselor Numala?
Yes.
Counselor, Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Nancy McNally, yes. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
We are going upstairs to executive session, and will return.
And to be able to work with him now leading the department, I know we're gonna do great things.
Westminster Fire Department would like to welcome Derek "Chief" Menard back to his city. We look forward to an amazing time with him and the teamwork that he will provide us. And I just personally want to say, from all of us, welcome back, Chief.
Welcome to Westminster Fire Department. Today, we're here to explain our job-specific performance assessment, also known as the JASPA. Every firefighter in Westminster has to pass this test within 10 minutes and 15 seconds. The job-specific performance assessment will be conducted annually for all incumbent firefighters. The firefighter will wear their issued personal protective equipment consisting of a fire department helmet, bunker coat, NFPA-approved gloves, and a Scott 5.5 air pack. The total weight of this equipment is approximately 32 pounds. The firefighter will not be breathing air from their air pack during this assessment. Event number one is the tool carry. The firefighter will remove a chainsaw and a circular saw from the tool compartment, place them on the ground, pick them back up, and then walk 50 feet around the cone back towards the engine. The firefighter will then pick one saw up at a time and place them back into the engine compartment and transition to the ladder event raise. Event number two is the ladder raise event. The firefighter will walk over to the ladder, which is a 28-foot extension ladder. The firefighter will raise the ladder hand over hand, or sliding his hands along the beam, resting against the building. The firefighter will then lower the ladder in a controlled manner until it's on the ground, and then the firefighter will transition to the next event. Event number three is a ladder extension. The firefighter will walk over to 35-foot extension ladder already in position. The firefighter will extend the fly section of the ladder with one foot touching the butt of the ladder and the other foot inside the painted box. And the firefighter will extend the ladder to full height, lock the locks, dogs are locked, get approval from the safety officer, release the locks, and lower the fly section all the way down and lock the locks in the stored position. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number four is the hose drag. The firefighter will walk towards the charge hose line, which is inch-and-three-quarter hose, and advance it 75 feet in a straight line. At the 75-foot mark, the firefighter will place the nozzle on the ground without showing water and transition to the next event. Event number five is the stair climb. The firefighter will walk inside the tower to the stairs, pick up a high-rise pack that contains one shoulder load of 55 feet of two-and-a-half-inch hose with a pressure gauge and high-rise tool bag, approximately weight of 43 pounds. The firefighter will proceed up the stairway to the fifth floor landing and drop the shoulder load and high-rise tool bag in the designated box and transition to the next event. Event number six is a horizontal standpipe hoist. The firefighter will come down from the fifth story, touching every stair, grab a two-inch hose, which is connected to a three-inch horizontal standpipe. The firefighter will pull the two-inch hose line until the gate awide is pulled up and over the safety railing and resting on the floor. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number seven is the dummy drag. The firefighter will exit the tower from the fourth story, touching every stair on the way down. The firefighter will lift the dummy, which weighs approximately 175 pounds, and drag the dummy 100 feet in a straight line to a marker. The firefighter may use any webbing or straps they carry in their bunker gear to assist them in the drag. The firefighter will be required to use a method that promotes a safe posture in an upright position. The assessment will be concluded once the firefighter crosses the line of the marker.
In my city, I have the opportunity to explore who I want to be.
In my city, I feel empowered to take on new challenges.
In my city, I am motivated to make a difference.
Here, I feel free to be me.
Here, I welcome more responsibility.
Here, my duty is to my community.
It's a community we cherish.
A community we are proud to protect.
Westminster is a city where service and passion are met with opportunity.
A place where we can connect with the team.
A place that supports us.
A place we feel wanted.
A place we're grateful for.
A place as strong as its people.
And a place we can call home.
My name's Adam Lanning. I'm a senior police officer with the Westminster Police Department. And the last three days, I've been riding my bicycle for the Police Unity Tour. It's a bicycle ride to bring awareness to line-of-duty deaths and to honor the fallen officers who died in the line of duty. Day one was Somerset, New Jersey. I was 88 miles. So, from there to Philadelphia. Then, day two was Philadelphia to Baltimore. That was 106, I think, somewhere in that ballpark. And today was Baltimore to here, the National Law Enforcement Memorial here in Washington, DC. All the different chapters come together. It was about 2,000 riders. There's lots of families, survivors, supporters here, out here cheering us on to have us ride through Memorial, which is where we finished today. Good morning. I'm Adam. I'm with Team Colorado. Today, I'm riding for Officer Gordon Beasley, who's with the Arvada Police Department. On June 21st, he was sent to a suspicious incident in Old Town, Arvada. Unbeknownst to him, there's a gentleman who intended to kill law enforcement that day. So, as Officer Beasley responded, the gentleman popped up from behind him and shot him and killed him. What made this event even more tragic was a Good Samaritan shot the suspect, killed him, unfortunately picked up his gun, and when Arvada arrived, Arvada Police killed the Good Samaritan. So, it's a tragic event where an officer lost his life for no reason, a Good Samaritan lost their life, darning to do the right thing. Officer Beasley was a good man. He was loved by all. He was an SRO, just helping patrol during the summertime. And much like us, he loved to ride his bike. So, I ride for Officer Gordon Beasley and the other 23,230 officers who names are on the National Enforcement, Law Enforcement Memorial.
I play the bagpipes, pipe for all the functions around the police department, as well as the state, all the line-of-duty deaths that have occurred. I'm ecstatic being able to play the pipes at the, at the wall when they put the names in from the Colorado officers that were killed last year. It's been a dream of mine since I started in this line of work 12 years ago. And, you know, we've lost Arvada officers, guys that are just right around the corner. And so, for us to be able to do that as a department, and me having the humbling opportunity to represent the Westminster Police Department at these services, I think is just, it speaks volumes of us as an agency and just how professional we are.
When we decide to ride for an officer particularly close to Colorado, we wear a bracelet right here, I'm wearing one right here. It says, "In honor and memory of Officer Gordon Beasley, Arvada Police Department, end of watch 6/21/22." We wear it the entire ride. I've worn it, we present it to the family either here or as soon as possible, just to kind of symbolize and let them know we were honoring their fallen spouse, friend, family member, whoever it may be. Team Colorado, our numbers were a little lower than usual this year, but we had eight. There's three from Adams County, one from Douglas County Sheriff's Office, a couple from CSU, and then one from Lafayette, and then myself from Westminster PD. This is my fourth year riding. It's always humbling. Every year we ride, we meet different people from all over the United States who are in law enforcement, talk about who they're riding for, why they are, to remember those who have died, who've given the ultimate sacrifice. And then, when you come here through the memorial, just remind you, you know, we're in a noble profession. We're still out there doing the right thing, and people have passed doing it, and we cannot, we cannot let their, their honor be forgotten. We're always looking for support. The National Law Enforcement Memorial is not government-funded. So, not only do we bring awareness to line-of-duty deaths, but the other goal is to keep the memorial going. It will never be completed, because every year, officers' names get added to the wall. For the Westminster residents, remember, we're out there, we're doing the best we can. It's, we're still an honorable profession. We believe we're doing the right thing to help everybody, and there are people who died doing this. And remember, remember their names, remember what they died for, and help us keep this going. I am pleased to announce that Derek Menard has returned to Westminster to serve as our next chief of the Westminster Fire Department.
I, Derek Menard.
I, Derek Menard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Hello, everyone.
How you doing, sir?
Good, Jeff. I served 28 years with the Westminster Fire Department in various roles. I started as a firefighter, then a firefighter paramedic. I was also a fire investigator. I worked in fire prevention as our Fire Plans Analyst. I was a captain on the floor. I helped to develop our wildland team with other members of the department. I was a battalion chief for six years. I was our I was our EMS chief for two years, and then the chief of operations for four years. I made the decision to go to Savannah, Georgia to be the fire chief to effect a culture change. The department went through a pretty tough time, and the morale was not at all high. And they needed somebody to come in and help the department heal and help to rebuild it and show them what servant leadership really looks like. It was a challenge that I welcomed. My growth was exponential, and it really set me up well to come home and to be the fire chief here. There are many people in this fire department that I grew up with in the fire service. It's wonderful when I walk in and see them and get the big hug and the welcome home and just to really embrace them and realize that they are still here, part of the team, and that we are going to lead this department into the next phase and to the future.
I was very fortunate. My work has crossed paths with Chief Menard for a long time. And in that capacity, it's running calls with him on 911 calls, to working structure fires, auto accidents, medical calls. He's an individual that believes in commitment to an organization, trust, and most importantly, is integrity.
I am a servant leader through and through, which is a person that goes in that really engages in the employees and gives them a voice.
And I recall vividly the moment I decided to become a paramedic. We had a cardiac arrest, and there was a group of us, five of us, working on this patient. And Derek was basically doing everything. He innovated, he defibrillated, he started the IVs, because most of us were very basic skills. So all we could do was assist him with those advanced skills. And that was the moment I knew I wanted to be a paramedic and I wanted to be like Derek at that time.
Chief Menard is that individual that has the passion for the city, the outdoor space that we all strive for within our own city. He likes to get out and hike. He's a huge advocate of the open space within our city, and I think that's important for everyone to know.
To the residents of Westminster, I just want to say that I'm really happy to be home. I'm really happy to be back in my community and able to protect it as the fire chief of Westminster. The people of Westminster, the firefighters, the administrative team, they're second to none. They're top shelf. They are the best at what they do. And being able to return to this exceptional staff and to be able to work with him now leading the department, I know we're going to do great things.
Westminster Fire Department would like to welcome Derek "Chief" Menard back to his city. We look forward to an amazing time with him and the teamwork that he will provide us. And I just personally want to say from all of us, welcome back, chief.
Welcome to Westminster Fire Department. Today, we're here to explain our job-specific performance assessment, also known as the JASPA. Every firefighter in Westminster has to pass this test within 10 minutes and 15 seconds. The job-specific performance assessment will be conducted annually for all incumbent firefighters. The firefighter will wear their issued personal protective equipment consisting of a fire department helmet, bunker coat, NFPA-approved gloves, and a Scott 5.5 air pack. The total weight of this equipment is approximately 32 pounds. The firefighter will not be breathing air from their air pack during this assessment. Event number one is a tool carry. The firefighter will remove a chainsaw and a circular saw from the tool compartment, place them on the ground, pick them back up, and then walk 50 feet around the cone back towards the engine. The firefighter will then pick one saw up at a time and place them back into the engine compartment and transition to the ladder event raise. Event number two is the ladder raise event. The firefighter will walk over to the ladder, which is a 28-foot extension ladder. The firefighter will raise the ladder hand over hand or sliding his hands along the beam, resting against the building. The firefighter will then lower the ladder in a controlled manner until it's on the ground, and then the firefighter will transition to the next event. Event number three is a ladder extension. The firefighter will walk over to 35-foot extension ladder already in position. The firefighter will extend the fly section of the ladder with one foot touching the butt of the ladder and the other foot inside the painted box. The firefighter will extend the ladder to full height, lock the locks. Dogs are locked. Get approval from the safety officer, release the locks, and lower the fly section all the way down and lock the locks in the stored position. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number four is the hose drag. The firefighter will walk towards the charge hose line, which is inch-and-three-quarter hose, and advance it 75 feet in a straight line. At the 75-foot mark, the firefighter will place the nozzle on the ground without showing water and transition to the next event. Event number five is the stair climb. The firefighter will walk inside the tower to the stairs, pick up a high-rise pack that contains one shoulder load of 55 feet of two-and-a-half-inch hose with a pressure gauge and high-rise tool bag, approximately weight of 43 pounds. The firefighter will proceed up the stairway to the fifth-floor landing and drop the shoulder load and high-rise tool bag in the designated box and transition to the next event. Event number six is a horizontal standpipe hoist. The firefighter will come down from the fifth story, touching every stair, grab a two-inch hose which is connected to a three-inch horizontal standpipe. The firefighter will pull the two-inch hose line until the gate of wide is pulled up and over the safety railing and resting on the floor. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number seven is the dummy drag. The firefighter will exit the tower from the fourth story, touching every stair on the way down. The firefighter will lift the dummy, which weighs approximately 175 pounds, and drag the dummy 100 feet in a straight line to a marker. The firefighter may use any webbing or straps they carry in their bunker gear to assist them in the drag. The firefighter will be required to use a method that promotes a safe posture in an upright position. The assessment will be concluded once the firefighter crosses the line of the marker.
In my city, I have the opportunity to explore who I want to be.
In my city, I feel empowered to take on new challenges.
In my city, I am motivated to make a difference.
Here, I feel free to be me.
Here, I welcome more responsibility.
Here, my duty is to my community.
It's a community we cherish.
A community we are proud to protect.
Westminster is a city where service and passion are met with opportunity.
A place where we can connect with the team.
A place that supports us.
A place we feel wanted.
A place we're grateful for.
A place as strong as its people.
And a place we can call home.
My name's Adam Lanning. I'm a senior police officer with the Westminster Police Department. And the last three days, I've been riding my bicycle for the Police Unity Tour. It's a bicycle ride to bring awareness to line-of-duty deaths and to honor the fallen officers who died in the line of duty. Day one was Somerset, New Jersey. I was 88 miles. So from there to Philadelphia. Then day two was Philadelphia to Baltimore. That was 106, I think, somewhere in that ballpark. And today was Baltimore to here, the National Law Enforcement Memorial here in Washington, DC. All the different chapters come together. It was about 2,000 riders. There's lots of families, survivors, supporters here out here cheering us on to have us ride through Memorial, which is where we finished today. Good morning. I'm Adam. I'm with Team Colorado. Today, I'm riding for Officer Gordon Beasley. He's with the Arvada Police Department. On June 21st, he was sent to a suspicious incident in Old Town, Arvada. Unbeknownst to him, there's a gentleman who intended to kill law enforcement that day. So Officer Beasley responded. The gentleman popped up from behind him and shot him and killed him. What made this event even more tragic was a Good Samaritan shot the suspect, killed him, unfortunately picked up his gun. And when Arvada arrived, Arvada Police killed the Good Samaritan. So it's a tragic event where an officer lost his life for no reason. A Good Samaritan lost their life, darning to do the right thing. Officer Beasley was a good man. He was loved by all. He was an SRO, just helping patrol during the summertime. And much like us, he loved to ride his bike. So I ride for Officer Gordon Beasley and the other 23,230 officers whose names are on the National Law Enforcement Memorial.
I play the bagpipes, pipe for all the functions around the police department as well as the state, all the line-of-duty deaths that have occurred. I'm ecstatic being able to play the pipes at the wall when they put the names in from the Colorado officers that were killed last year. It's been a dream of mine since I started in this line of work 12 years ago. You know, we've lost Arvada officers, guys that are just right around the corner. And so for us to be able to do that as a department and me having the humbling opportunity to represent the Westminster Police Department at these services, I think it speaks volumes of us as an agency and just how professional we are.
When we decide to ride for an officer particularly close to Colorado, we wear a bracelet right here. I'm wearing one right here. It says, "In honor and memory of Officer Gordon Beasley, Arvada Police Department, end of watch, 6/21/22." We wear it the entire ride. I've worn it. We present it to the family either here or as soon as possible, just to kind of symbolize and let them know we were honoring their fallen spouse, friend, family member, whoever it may be. Team Colorado, our numbers were a little lower than usual this year, but we had eight. There's three from Adams County, one from Douglas County Sheriff's Office, a couple from CSU, and then one from Lafayette, and then myself from Westminster PD. This is my fourth year riding. It's always humbling. Every year we ride, we meet different people from all over the United States who are in law enforcement, talk about who they're riding for, why they are, to remember those who have died, who've given the ultimate sacrifice. And then when you come here through the memorial, it just reminds you, you know, we're in a noble profession. We're still out there doing the right thing. And people have passed doing it. We cannot let their honor be forgotten. We're always looking for support. The National Law Enforcement Memorial is not government-funded. So not only do we bring awareness to line-of-duty deaths, but the other goal is to keep the memorial going. It will never be completed because every year, officers' names get added to the wall. For the Westminster residents, remember, we're out there. We're doing the best we can. We're still an honorable profession. We believe we're doing the right thing to help everybody. And there are people who die doing this. And remember their names, remember what they died for, and help us keep this going.
I am pleased to announce that Derek Menard has returned to Westminster to serve as our next chief of the Westminster Fire Department.
I, Derek Menard.
I, Derek Menard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Hello, everyone.
How you doing, sir?
Good, Jeff. I served 28 years with the Westminster Fire Department in various roles. I started as a firefighter, then a firefighter paramedic. I was also a fire investigator. I worked in fire prevention as our Fire Plans Analyst. I was a captain on the floor. I helped to develop our wildland team with other members of the department. I was a battalion chief for six years. I was our EMS chief for two years, and then the chief of operations for four years. I made the decision to go to Savannah, Georgia to be the fire chief to effect a culture change. The department went through a pretty tough time, and the morale was not at all high. And they needed somebody to come in and help the department heal and help to rebuild it and show them what servant leadership really looks like. It was a challenge that I welcomed. My growth was exponential, and it really set me up well to come home and to be the fire chief here. There are many people in this fire department that I grew up with in the fire service. It's wonderful when I walk in and see them and get the big hug and the welcome home and just to really embrace them and realize that they are still here, part of the team, and that we are going to lead this department into the next phase and to the future.
I was very fortunate. My work has crossed paths with Chief Menard for a long time. And in that capacity, it's running calls with him on 911 calls, to working structure fires, auto accidents, medical calls. He's an individual that believes in commitment to an organization, trust, and most importantly, is integrity.
I am a servant leader through and through, which is a person that goes in that really engages in the employees and gives them a voice.
And I recall vividly the moment I decided to become a paramedic. We had a cardiac arrest, and there was a group of us, five of us, working on this patient. And Derek was basically doing everything. He innovated, he defibrillated, he started the IVs, because most of us were very basic skills. So all we could do was assist him with those advanced skills. And that was the moment I knew I wanted to be a paramedic and I wanted to be like Derek at that time.
Chief Menard is that individual that has the passion for the city, the outdoor space that we all strive for within our own city. He likes to get out and hike. He's a huge advocate of the open space within our city, and I think that's important for everyone to know.
To the residents of Westminster, I just want to say that I'm really happy to be home. I'm really happy to be back in my community and able to protect it as the fire chief of Westminster. The people of Westminster, the firefighters, the administrative team, they're second to none. They're top shelf. They are the best at what they do. And being able to return to this exceptional staff and to be able to work with him now leading the department, I know we're going to do great things.
Westminster Fire Department would like to welcome Derek "Chief" Menard back to his city. We look forward to an amazing time with him and the teamwork that he will provide us. And I just personally want to say from all of us, welcome back, chief.
Welcome to Westminster Fire Department. Today, we're here to explain our job-specific performance assessment, also known as the JASPA. Every firefighter in Westminster has to pass this test within 10 minutes and 15 seconds. The job-specific performance assessment will be conducted annually for all incumbent firefighters. The firefighter will wear their issued personal protective equipment consisting of a fire department helmet, bunker coat, NFPA-approved gloves, and a Scott 5.5 air pack. The total weight of this equipment is approximately 32 pounds. The firefighter will not be breathing air from their air pack during this assessment. Event number one is a tool carry. The firefighter will remove a chainsaw and a circular saw from the tool compartment, place them on the ground, pick them back up, and then walk 50 feet around the cone back towards the engine. The firefighter will then pick one saw up at a time and place them back into the engine compartment and transition to the ladder event raise. Event number two is the ladder raise event. The firefighter will walk over to the ladder, which is a 28-foot extension ladder. The firefighter will raise the ladder hand over hand or sliding his hands along the beam, resting against the building. The firefighter will then lower the
The firefighter will then lower the ladder in a controlled manner until it's on the ground, and then the firefighter will transition to the next event. Event number three is a ladder extension. The firefighter will walk over to 35-foot extension ladder already in position. The firefighter will extend the fly section of the ladder with one foot touching the butt of the ladder and the other foot inside the painted box on it. The firefighter will extend the ladder to full height, lock the locks. Dogs are locked. Get approval from the safety officer, release the locks, and lower the fly section all the way down and lock the locks in the stored position. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number four is the hose drag. The firefighter will walk towards the charged hose line, which is inch-and-three-quarter hose, and advance it 75 feet in a straight line. At the 75-foot mark, the firefighter will place the nozzle on the ground without showing water and transition to the next event. Event number five is the stair climb. The firefighter will walk inside the tower to the stairs, pick up a high-rise pack that contains one shoulder load of 55 feet of two-and-a-half-inch hose with a pressure gauge and high-rise tool bag, approximately weight of 43 pounds. The firefighter will proceed up the stairway to the fifth-floor landing and drop the shoulder load and high-rise tool bag in the designated box and transition to the next event. Event number six is a horizontal standpipe hoist. The firefighter will come down from the fifth story, touching every stair, grab a two-inch hose, which is connected to a three-inch horizontal standpipe. The firefighter will pull the two-inch hose line until the gatelet wide is pulled up and over the safety railing and resting on the floor. The firefighter will then transition to the next event. Event number seven is the dummy drag. The firefighter will exit the tower from the fourth story, touching every stair on the way down. The firefighter will lift the dummy, which weighs approximately 175 pounds, and drag the dummy 100 feet in a straight line to a marker. The firefighter may use any webbing or straps they carry in their bunker gear to assist them in the drag. The firefighter will be required to use a method that promotes a safe posture in an upright position. The assessment will be concluded once the firefighter crosses the line of the marker.
In my city, I feel empowered to take on new challenges.
In my city, I am motivated to make a difference.
Here, I feel free to be me.
Here, I welcome more responsibility.
Here, my duty is to my community.
It's a community we cherish.
A community we are proud to protect.
Westminster is a city where service and passion are met with opportunity.
A place where we can connect with the team.
A place that supports us.
A place we feel wanted.
A place we're grateful for.
A place as strong as its people.
And a place we can call home.
I'm a senior police officer with the Westminster Police Department, and the last three days I've been riding my bicycle for the Police Unity Tour. It's a bicycle ride to bring awareness to line of duty deaths and to honor the fallen officers who died in the line of duty. Day one was Somerset, New Jersey. I was 88 miles. So from there to Philadelphia. Then day two was Philadelphia to Baltimore. That was 106, I think, somewhere in that ballpark. And today was Baltimore to here, the National Law Enforcement Memorial here in Washington, DC. All the different chapters come together. It was about 2,000 riders. There's lots of families, survivors, supporters here out here cheering us on to have us ride through Memorial, which is where we finished today. Good morning. I'm Adam. I'm with Team Colorado. Today I'm riding for Officer Gordon Beasley. He's with the Arvada Police Department. June 21st, he was sent to a suspicious incident in Old Town, Arvada. Unbeknownst to him, there was a gentleman who intended to kill law enforcement that day. So as Officer Beasley responded, the gentleman popped up from behind him and shot him and killed him. What made this event even more tragic was a Good Samaritan shot the suspect, killed him, unfortunately picked up his gun, and when Arvada arrived, Arvada police killed the Good Samaritan. So it's a tragic event where an officer lost his life for no reason, a Good Samaritan lost their life, daring to do the right thing. Officer Beasley was a good man. He was loved by all. He was an SRO, just helping patrol during the summertime. And much like us, he loved to ride his bike. So I ride for Officer Gordon. When we decide to ride for an officer particularly close to Colorado, we wear a bracelet right here. I'm wearing one right here. It says "In honor and memory of Officer Gordon Beasley, Arvada Police Department, end of watch, 6/21/22." We wear it the entire ride. I've worn it. We present it to the family either here or as soon as possible, just to kind of symbolize and let them know we were honoring their fallen spouse, friend, family member, whoever it may be. Team Colorado, our numbers were a little lower than usual this year, but we had eight. There's three from Adams County, one from Douglas County Sheriff's Office, a couple from CSU, and then one from Lafayette, and then myself from Westminster PD. This is my fourth year riding. It's always humbling. Every year we ride, we meet different people from all over the United States who are in law enforcement, talk about who they're riding for, why they are, to remember those who have died, who've given the ultimate sacrifice. And then when you come here through the memorial, it just reminds you, you know, we're in a noble profession. We're still out there doing the right thing, and people have passed doing it, and we cannot let their honor be forgotten. We're always looking for support. The National Law Enforcement Memorial is not government-funded, so not only do we bring awareness to line of duty deaths, but the other goal is to keep the memorial going. It will never be completed because every year officers' names get added to the wall. For the Westminster residents, remember, we're out there, we're doing the best we can. We're still an honorable profession. We believe we're doing the right thing to help everybody, and there are people who die doing this. And remember their names, remember what they died for, and help us keep this going.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. We'll go ahead and get the slides pulled up for the City Manager's update. And so first thing I wanted to share with the council and certainly with those in attendance in our community in general is, city staff this past Wednesday had the opportunity to go up to Longmont and visit just a rather unique project. They have a market rate housing development that's going up, but in addition to market housing, they're partnering with Habitat for Humanity to provide affordable housing on the campus, and they're partnering with the Veterans Community Project, which is based in Kansas City, to put in, if I remember correctly, about 26 tiny homes for veterans in transition, where they have central core services and then transitional tiny homes for those veterans. There's a picture of it on the slide here to the right. Fascinating conversation, really impressive. I think Channel 2 actually did a news story the following morning that aired, for anybody who might want to check that out. But it really kind of opened up our mind as far as, you know, what tiny home community might look like. Certainly, the affordable project provided by Habitat, you know, we see that across the metro region. But what I liked about this project was is that, you know, you're not putting tiny homes into a community that's already pre-existing. You're not putting affordable into a community that's already existing. This development is starting all three components together, and those market rate homes are scheduled to cost somewhere between $300,000 and $900,000. And so a full kind of range of market housing, but it's an integrated community. Really liked what we saw, great conversations. Frankly, the developer, the city, Habitat for Humanity, and Veterans Community Project all kind of worked together to bring this to reality. And so I think we had probably a dozen or so city staff members who went. And what I would offer to you is, you know, we need to take a look at what we learned, what we saw, look at our codes and identify, you know, are there impediments to doing something like this in Westminster? And then come back to the council with some proposals for, you know, should you want to, opening up and adjusting our codes to allow for these kinds of developments. But fascinating project, and, you know, as a veteran, I was excited about the fact, as indicated on the slides, that when they bring folks into this tiny home community, they have an 85% success rate of veterans that were experiencing homelessness to get into permanent housing. So a great news story there. And it doesn't have to necessarily be veterans-specific, but something that provides a home and it provides the services necessary to make that transition. So a great opportunity to go check that out, and we'll certainly come back this summer with updates to the council on kind of how we propose moving forward. But that was time well spent. Next slide. Some Westy wins. If you are not aware, Money Magazine ranked Westminster as one of the top 10 places to live in the West. I think our actual number was number nine, and so when you think about the entire Western United States and Westminster is number nine as the best, one of the best places to live, that's pretty impressive. They looked at 350 pieces of data, and that's how they came up with their ranking. But they looked at amenities, cost of living, diversity, economic opportunity, education, funding amenities, health and safety, housing market, income, and personal finance, and then wrapping it all up with quality of life. So I think it speaks very, very highly of this wonderful community that we call home. Next, for the third consecutive year, the city has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 2023 budget, and this is the highest essentially form of recognition of local government budgeting process. And so it's something that in my former community, we certainly strive for, never reached, and the fact that the community here, the city team, has done this now three years in a row is pretty impressive. And so that's a great testament to our finance department and frankly, the entire city team that develops the budget and then certainly the council that provides oversight and sets those priorities. Lastly, the Westminster Elks Club recognized Westminster Police Department Sergeant Patrick Clark as Officer of the Year. And so there's a photo of him in the lower right-hand corner receiving the award. He served as a school resource officer at Silver Hills Middle School, and he's built strong relationships with Adams County school district officials, parents, and his students. And so what a great testament to one of our finest. Next slide. Some things to know. Election Commission Tuesday, March 21st, 6:00 PM, right here, and it won't be in the city council boardroom. It'll be here in the council chambers unless they come up with another location, but we're still not using that because of audio, et cetera. And then city council meeting, March 27th, 6:30 PM, here in council chambers. Next slide. No information-only items tonight. Next slide. And then, as always, encourage folks to reach out, contact the city. If you have questions, you can contact my office. My number is 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfrytag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Twitter. You can like us on Facebook. You can check us out on Instagram, and you can ring our bell at Next Door. As always, we want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Councilor Nubella.
I just got really excited just hearing about the project that you and staff took a look at. I'd love to see us look for opportunities like that in Westminster. I know we have a good deal of just property that we're sitting on that, you know, could be utilized for incentivizing a project like this. And, you know, just down the street, 92nd and Lowell, sat there for a really long time, the southwest corner, and, I mean, a project that utilizes the skills of Habitat for Humanity, put townhomes on there, would help kind of revitalize that corner that's been sitting there fallow for quite a long time. I just would love to see us take advantage, piece by piece.
Yes, and we've, staff has already thought of multiple locations across the city where something like this might be appropriate. And so we're thinking hard on it. I think it's a nice offering to provide developers and certainly our community.
Councilor Nubella, I saw it on TV, got so excited, and emailed him and said, "Oh, you got to watch this." And he said, "Mayor, we were there last week." Okay, so that brings us to presentations. City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. So we have three presentations for you this evening. All of them are on, you know, very, very relevant topics, things that are important to our community. The presentations are really an information presentation, so just bringing you up to speed on where things are at. You certainly have the opportunity to ask questions. We're not trying to solve problems here. We're just trying to inform you as to kind of where these programs are at. And so we have one on homelessness efforts in Adams County. We have one on the Regional Transportation District Northwest Rail Peak Service Study, and we have representatives from Jefferson County Public Schools to talk about the three school closures here in Westminster. So without any further ado, I'm going to invite Kate Scarbeck, our senior management analyst, but really the one tasked with managing our homelessness outreach efforts in the community. in the community. But Kate, if you'd come up and introduce your associates from Adams County and we'll get this presentation going. And to the Adams County reps, thanks again for joining us.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
We need the microphone up and you in it.
Okay. How's that? Fully up. Got it.
And you do have to speak directly into the mic.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Not so far away from the mic.
Okay. Sounds good. Let me know if that changes as I speak. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council for having us here tonight. I am Kate Scarbeck, Senior Management Analyst with the City of Westminster, as you know, and I am here to proudly present my colleagues in Adams County, Community Safety and Wellbeing Manager Paulo Diaz, and Community Safety and Wellness and Being for Adams County Lindsay Earl, who's been recently promoted to Homeless Administrator for the county. And they're here to highlight all the work that they've been doing in partnership with the city and other cities throughout the county. Thank you. And we will, we will take questions after the presentation.
Great, thanks, Kate. Thanks, Mayor and council. Thank you for having us today. We're excited to finally share some of the work that we have been doing here in Adams County regarding homelessness. I've been with the county for about four-plus years now, almost five. Lindsay's been with the county for two and a half years. And so we basically started working on this and got it to where it's at now, so we're happy to share that with you. And we're calling it Regional Alignment on Homelessness because that's really been a big focus of what we've been doing in Adams County as we wanted to approach it. It really started about a year and a half ago, more specifically on the regional alignment side, specifically with ARPA dollars and wanting to meet with our partners, specifically city managers, as well as city council members and city staff, to really hear about what it is that they want, what their homelessness situation looks like and how we might be able to support and try to align some of that effort. What that's really allowed us to do is really connect at the leadership level as well as being able to understand the communities, the different political wills, the different interests, and then from there, try to align on some homelessness initiatives that might work, that would help support, and to Lindsay's perfect metaphor, help people understand what their piece of the pie is as it comes to homelessness. And it's really allowed our county commissioners to really decide, or to really put some investments towards, towards our homelessness efforts and housing efforts, such as recently earmarking dollars for tiny homes, as Councilor Nermella just kind of pointed out earlier, where there are some dollars earmarked for it should a project become available. So now I just kind of want to move to the next slide. Do I get a button? Okay, great, thanks. This is great. I only have to do one thing, which is just talk. So as far as the regional alignment on homelessness, we started this conversation late 2021, as I mentioned, as we were trying to embark on the ARPA journey. And so with that, what it's resulted in is all the cities really trying to agree on focusing on regional alignment to strengthen the regional coordination. And what that's resulted in is an MOU that allows us to work with the municipalities on a closer basis, that allows us to have a shared vision, allows us to have a non-centralized approach, and really to share on the improved outcomes for people experiencing homelessness. So the thing that we ask for from the municipalities as it pertains to the MOU is a commitment to align on homelessness services and housing efforts, to assign a member to the core team, which Kate Scarbeck has finally represented the City of Westminster in, as well as data sharing. And what the data sharing has allowed us to do is really to look at what the homelessness numbers look like. For example, what the data is currently showing is you'll see from the pit count, that you guys are pretty familiar with at this point, that there were about 472 individuals experiencing homelessness as of the pit count in 2022. For those who believe that, you can think that, but our current data shows that there's over 4,500 people experiencing homelessness in Adams County. So for us, what that means is we need to be out there, we need to be intentional, and not just know that there's 4,500 people experiencing homelessness in Adams County, which includes a lot of family members there through the McKinney Vento programs. But it also allows us to understand and get to know these individuals so we know what the right interventions are and what the right programs and services might be needed. And so the way that we've done that as far as the data sharing is concerned is we have a secure electronic data warehouse. And again, this is the MOU that we have with the municipalities that allows us to really understand what homelessness looks like over there. It also allows us to create evidence-based strategies surrounding homelessness. And this is a model that's actually been lauded by the Metro Denver Homelessness Initiative, and we presented numerous times to the, to the metro area county commissioners just to share with them what we've been doing on regional alignment based off of our strategic framework on homelessness, which covers homelessness prevention, homelessness services, and housing continuum, which Lindsay will touch on specifically on the programs on that. And what regional alignment looks like, as we go on to the next slide, is it shows that there's programs and services throughout all of Adams County, and it's not just centralized in one particular location. So you'll see that we had a winter housing program over in the city of Northland when a facility was available. We have safe parking available in Commerce City, Navigation Center in Westminster, as well as in Brighton. We have a mailroom and a place to store vital docs over in Northland as well. We have a smart bench in unincorporated Adams County. We're also getting two more. One will be in Commerce City and another one will be in Brighton. We have hotel voucher intakes also in Northland. We do quarterly Navigate Adams Resource Fairs. We have one actually on Thursday over in Commerce City, as well as our nonprofit partners in Brighton, Commerce City, and Westminster, and our mobile shower units. And next slide. And so what this results in, in looking at our 2022 data, is we've seen a 34% increase in shelter beds since 2021. One of the things that we're most proud of with our severe weather activation plan is how many nights of homelessness we've been able to avert. We've averted over 10,000 nights of homelessness last winter season. We've already exceeded that due to the severe cold weather that we've experienced. We've done that through the partnerships with nine hotels and all of our municipalities' navigators to be able to connect individuals to vouchers. And so with that, we've already averted over 15,000 nights of homelessness, but the most important stat to us is there's been zero deaths due to cold weather exposure. Specifically, after the big December cold snap, I know Lindsay reached out to our coroner just to see if there were any that we somehow missed, and none have turned up, thankfully. So that's the reason why we really wanted to start this program is prior to this, I remember the, this one winter season where we got a call in Commerce City, Northland, and unincorporated Adams County, and that was something that we certainly wanted to avoid. For the Built for Zero movement in 2022, we were also able to reduce veteran homelessness by 72%. And that's something that we're extremely proud of, not only because has it been regional work, but the national number is 11%. And actually, the Metro Denver Homelessness Initiative reports that the seven counties in this area reduced it by 30%. And so for us to reduce it by 72% is something that we're extremely proud of, and that was due to the regional work. And in 2022, we, there were 1,380 exits from homelessness, according to our homelessness management information system. One of the things that I did talk about is we do have a homelessness strategic framework that the county commissioners adopted back in July of 2021. And we did have three focus areas on there. They were informed by our partners. And so Lindsay's going to talk about what those three focus areas are and how we worked on that.
Thank you, Paulo, and thanks so much for having us here. Everyone can hear me, I hear myself, so I think it's working. But I'm so happy to be here to tell you a little bit more about our programs and services that we've been working on within our three goal areas of Homeward Adams. So, next slide, please. Oh, no, this slide. So first one is homelessness prevention. And so we started an eviction prevention committee in Adams County, and this committee has members who are eviction prevention lawyers, nonprofit leaders, as well as interested residents. So we've been meeting now for about two years or so. And one of our main accomplishments is we were able to create an eviction prevention resource guide, which is now the front page of every eviction packet that's given out to tenants in Adams County, and that was previously not the case. As we think simply just providing that information alone, we may be reducing evictions in Adams County. And then for emergency rental assistance, we had a significant influx of dollars from the US Treasury during the COVID pandemic. And so we decided to distribute those dollars to our various housing authorities, and they were able to give all of that money out, and we had some of the lowest eviction rates that we've seen in recent history due to that funding. Unfortunately, that funding has run out at this point, and so evictions are returning to pre-pandemic levels. Additionally, we have a contract with Colorado Legal Services, and this means that every Adams County resident has access to a pro bono lawyer to help them file an answer to fight their eviction charge. Additionally, we have a contract with Colorado Poverty Law Project, another law entity, and they have pro bono lawyers to help folks that live in mobile home parks if they are facing a foreclosure or other sort of legal issue at that time. And then lastly, we have tenant landlord mediation. This was with a nonprofit called Brothers Redevelopment. And they have a third-party mediator that's assigned to Adams County in case anyone is facing kind of a conflict that doesn't quite fit within the court system, they can negotiate with that third-party mediator to hopefully come up with a payment plan or some other alternative outside of the court system. Okay, next slide now. So next goal area is homelessness services. So these are services for people experiencing active homelessness. And so starting off, we now have full geographic street outreach coverage in Adams County. So that means that every person experiencing homelessness has a designated point of contact, regardless of what community that they're living in. So we do have some smaller municipalities like Brighton or the Town of Bennett, but we do have nonprofits or other municipalities that are covering those jurisdictions so that every person does have a point of contact at this time. And then, as Paulo mentioned, we're involved in the Built for Zero movement to end veteran homelessness, and thankful that some of the navigators in Westminster attend those meetings that are helping out with that. We also have smart benches, as you'll see, the picture is the one in unincorporated Adams County, and then we have two more we're hoping to place within our communities. And just for a little more information on what a smart bench is, it's a solar-powered bench that has Wi-Fi and charging ports, so we're trying to put those in low-income communities to increase connectivity for those residents. Respite housing, these are long-term hotel vouchers for people experiencing situational homelessness, things like domestic violence. So we're continuing to invest in respite housing through our partners. We recently have launched a long-distance travel program with American Rescue Plan Dollars. So these are for instances where folks are in our community, maybe they want to stay with friends or family in another state, but they don't have the funds to get to that other community. So we verify that they do have someone that they can stay with, that they're able to stay there for free, or they can afford to live there, and then we get them that bus, train, or plane ticket to get to their destination. So so far, we've gotten two folks to where they need to go. All right, and then up in Adams, it says coming soon. We launched today, this morning, so this is exciting. This is an employment program which we are launching to focus on providing people who are unsheltered with workplace employment opportunities to help them gain skills, certifications, apprenticeships, so that they can gain high-wage employment in the future. And then Lyft rides, we have a Lyft concierge account as well. And so we are able to add people as dispatchers who can get rides for low-income community members, whether they're unsheltered, facing an eviction, or domestic violence, and our law enforcement officials also have access to this platform as well. All right, and then mobile services also, so there's kind of two categories with this. We have mobile showers and laundry that we have in two locations throughout Adams County, and this is where people can get access to sanitation services so that they can feel confident and empowered if they have something like a job interview. And then with American Rescue Plan Dollars, we are also launching a mobile mental health program. And so this would be a trailer that would be converted almost like a therapy office, and that trailer would be driven to encampments or other areas with low-income residents, and they could do those appointments right on the spot without needing to access transportation to get to the mental health facility. All right, next, please. Okay, so just want to highlight a couple of programs. The severe weather activation program is really our flagship program and kind of our largest and most complicated to coordinate. So just a couple highlights here. We have gone completely paperless with the system. Before, navigators were having to run back and forth between hotels, and that was taking up a lot of staff time. So now we've moved to a completely electronic, paperless platform, so that's very exciting. And then this year, we've served over 1,000 individuals and over 13,000 nights of unsheltered homelessness. As Paulo mentioned, it's been extremely cold. You all know, you've lived here. And then one other thing, so we had one day where we had so many vouchers that we distributed. It was one of the cold snaps in December, over 410 rooms were booked in our hotels. So this also helps out our small businesses as well. And then our swap budget over time, so as you can see here, it has grown significantly. In the beginning, we only had $100,000 that were devoted to this, and we asked for municipal contributions. As of this year, we're currently at $1.3 million, and we're funding that entirely with Adams County general dollars at this time. Next slide, please. Okay, few more highlights. So our severe weather activation program does serve majority people who are Adams County residents or entered homelessness in Adams County. At last check, that was about 60% of folks. We have seen a slight uptick of people coming from Jefferson County, Weld County, or out of state, and we assume that that has to do with fluctuations in sheltering programs across the state and across the country. And we did make some changes to this program as of February 1st, so we're hoping to predominantly serve folks that are connected with programs or case management in Adams County to cut down on the number of people that are coming from communities far, far away, because that's not our intention either. And then just for your information as well, about 16% of swap participants said that they slept in Westminster the night previously to accessing a voucher. Next slide. All right, so this slide here, I'll just explain it real quick. This is our housing continuum. So what we tried to do is actually map out our programs and services along that housing continuum. We try to think of it this way because we know that people experiencing homelessness are unique individuals with various stories, experiences, barriers, strengths, and they have unique needs and unique preferences. So we need to have a spectrum of services that accommodate all of those things. So on the left-hand side, you'll see emergency shelter. These are more temporary crisis mitigation types of services. And then on the right-hand side is supportive housing, and these are the most permanent and stabilizing programs that we have. And then you will also see some of these are highlighted in orange, that's because these are American Rescue Plan-funded projects, and the ones that had the asterisk are the ones that were funded most recently with tranch $2. So many of those projects are soon to be launched, but not yet launched. So you'll see, we have a wide breadth of programs, which is exactly what our intention is. Next slide. So that concludes our presentation. We're really proud of all the work we're doing, but as Paulo mentioned, we still have 4,500 people experiencing homelessness in Adams County, so there's a long way to go. So I just encourage you all to think about, what is your slice of the pie? And how can you continue to be part of the solution? So at this time, I think we're ready for questions.
Councilor Nermella?
Thank you for that presentation. I mean, it looks like you're already doing a ton of things, so I'm just going to ask a few things that maybe I didn't see pointed out on there. So with respect to the sort of continuum of housing solutions that you have, are you looking at the things that are slightly out of the box, like extended stay, RV, and campground options? And, you know, I just sat through last Friday some great sessions at the Rocky Mountain Land Use Conference, and what was highlighted was both Denver's Tiny Home Village as well as Aurora's Pallet Shelter Village. And what's, what really stuck out to me was that those, those are not permanent homes, but they're places where actually they get more people willing to go to those types of shelter because they don't, people generally don't feel safe in the shelter, the sort of communal shelter facility. That was really hard to say. And so I'm just kind of curious if we're, you know, trying to find ways where we're really getting people to be responsive to the types of shelter that we have and sort of expanding that, because it was something where the average stay was maybe 45 days and they were, a lot of people just moved on to more permanent housing solutions through that versus deciding not at all to be helped?
Yeah, I'll start answering, and then Lindsay can chime in here in a little bit if she'd like. The answer is yes and yes. I mean, we're trying to look at any and all options in all seriousness. I mean, we've, we've looked at hotels, we've looked at, you know, the winter housing program that we ran, that was an old recreation center from Northland. So while they were waiting the demolition of that one to repurpose it, we, that's why the program was housed over there. As people reach out to us with facilities, like hotels have reached out to us, we've looked at parking lots, someone reached out to us regarding a recently decertified assisted living place. So yeah, anytime that we hear, and this is why we rely a lot on this whole regional work and working with our partners, is because we don't often hear about where the properties are at. So yes, we're looking at any and all options, whether congregate shelter or non-congregate shelter, as well as outdoor facilities, whether safe outdoor spaces or tiny homes, things like that.
One additional question. The, I thought at some point we had, I'll just look at Kate. Who shall I look at? The, when we had the cold snap, did we at some point run out of hotel rooms that we could send people to? Or was it funding?
No, we, we did run into a problem with finding more hotel rooms during the January cold snap, but in December, we were able to keep adding hotel rooms. And so we wound up with, 50 hotel rooms were occupied that were paid for by Westminster in addition to the 400-plus that swap was providing through Adams County. And then we also, of course, as you'll remember, operated the emergency shelter. And then, we also, of course, as you'll remember, operated the emergency shelter at the MAC for those who had decided after hours to be coming indoors, that the weather was too severe. And we did the same thing in January with the countryside.
So, we have access, then if we run out of Westminster hotel rooms, that we can access additional ones?
If the hotel rooms are available. That's dependent solely upon how many people are renting those rooms for average, for regular travel, or because they themselves are living in it. But we do try to get any hotel room that we possibly can, especially on those extremely frigid nights.
Counselor Ozadi.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is fantastic work. Thank you guys for all the work that you do here. Kate knows this, I care about this issue very much. So, lots of questions. First off, what percentage increase was that 4,500 roughly from the year before?
Unfortunately, I don't think we can say. I hate that this is a non-answer. We've had a lot of programs and services start using the Homelessness Management Information System recently, and so, it probably looks like a really, really big increase, but that's kind of deceptive because it just means more providers are using the system. However, at this point, I think we have so many providers using it that from this point forward, we will be able to assess increase from the system.
Okay, so lack of, so it's, the usage is increasing, so we don't really have a good baseline yet?
Not yet.
But this is the baseline now? That geographic street outreach, how many folks does that entail?
It's about 25 people across Adams County, yeah. And some communities, like Westminster, have two navigators, some have one, and some, like I mentioned, are too small. They just can't afford to have one person.
So, that outreach includes our two and other cities?
Yes.
Navigators, okay. Can you speak to the makeup of the committee that you referenced that analyzed the data? And what kind of data was analyzed before the strategy was developed?
Sure. Are you talking about the Homelessness Reduction Strategic Framework or the current core team on data, or all of it?
All of it.
Okay, that sounds great. With regards-
Was it one committee for all of it?
No, it's been different. So, in developing the Homeward Adams, our Homelessness Reduction Strategic Framework, the one where we came up with a strategy on homelessness prevention, homelessness services, and strengthening the housing continuum. That first started meeting in about 2018, 2019. And Kate Skarbeck was on there, but it was representative of municipalities, it had nonprofit organizations, so Almost Home was on there, even Growing Home was on there, Access Housing was on there. We also had faith-based groups on there, so we had two or three different churches that were also part of that group, as were some housing authorities. So, Maker Housing Partners was also a part of that. I feel like Brighton Housing Authority was a part of that, too. Brighton Housing Authority was there, too. So, it was certainly a cross-sector partnership among the municipalities, nonprofit organizations, faith-based groups, and housing authorities. Since we've started convening the regional alignment on homelessness, we are only working with municipalities currently for this regional alignment on homelessness, on this, on the, for the core team. And that's just so we could look at the data, and we can talk about it, and it's more of that type of focus. There are various other groups that are meeting, and so, we're pulling a lot of information from there. So, Lindsay alluded to the Eviction Prevention Subcommittee that works on the eviction prevention side. When it comes to homelessness services, there's a street outreach committee that's meeting that focuses on that. So, really, we're trying to engage everyone, just in different groups. Historically, prior to 2018, before I started, the Adams County Coalition for the Homeless, remember that, Kate? They would meet. They would meet, was it monthly or quarterly? I think it was monthly, and then it got shortened to quarterly. But what it resulted in was, you know, all these cross-sector partners, and it became like a four-hour update session, correct, Kate? Correct. So, that's why what we wanted to do is we really wanted to focus the work of what can municipalities work on? What can outreach workers work on? What can the eviction prevention organizations work on? And approached it that way, just to make sure that it's more methodical and more intentional.
Yeah, you know, that's a fascinating approach. I mean, that's the right approach, because, you know, there are so many various entities that are starting up their own kind of homelessness task force. For example, I'm the chair of the Homelessness Task Force for the Westminster Legacy Foundation. We just started that up. And we're looking into data and figuring out how to strategize this. But when I, the more I think about this, there are existing things like you guys, right?
Yeah.
That have centralized that information, and it's much more efficient to actually pull together what's out there, which you've already done, and then see if we can pour fuel on that. So, I'm curious, from a city standpoint, what, what, how can a city like Westminster or any municipality actually help to pour fuel on what you're doing?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is really making sure that there is some leadership from up top and a lot of interest from up top, and being intentional about what it is that you guys might be interested in doing. And Lindsay, feel free to chime in here, just because I know that you work a lot with the citizens. But really, honestly, from our perspective, we've spent a whole lot of time diving through the data to make sure that we understand what it is that we need to be focusing on. What makes Adams County unique compared to a lot of the other counties throughout here is the number-one reason people become homeless is because of domestic violence. So, that's why our county commissioners invested $4.32 million over the next four years on domestic violence services, just because we know that that's where the need is. Something that our senior data analyst over in Adams County in our Community Safety Wellbeing Department does is he pulls a lot of the data for us through the HMIS stuff, the ones that are inputted by a lot of our navigators. And so, we're actually able to compare what Adams County's number looks like as far as homelessness compared to all of MDHI's numbers, so the seven counties. And why that's important to us is what makes our suburban community that much different from others, so we can make sure that we're focusing on that as opposed to what people perceive homelessness to look like. Even in this regional alignment on homelessness that I was talking about, knowing how much it bleeds into other communities, because homelessness knows no boundaries. The city and county in Broomfield is actually involved in the MOU as well, and they're actually actively engaged. And they're always reaching out to us, talking about grant opportunities and how we can join in on the solutions. They've also now invested in swap as well, so they're actually funding their own swap program. And now, the city of Arvada, all of city of Arvada, and not just this portion in Adams County, has also signed on to the MOU to make sure that they're also aligned in what we're trying to do here.
And what about Jeffco?
Jeffco has, we have not, we met with Jeffco, we presented at Jeffco two or three weeks ago. I know they're still trying to figure some things out.
And can you speak to more on the, so the data for mobile services and Upin Adams? How, what kind of usage are you getting on the Upin Adams thing?
Yeah, Upin Adams is brand-new as of 12 hours ago. But what it came from was because we really wanted to work on a homelessness employment program. So, over the last two and a half years, we ran Adams County Dayworks through Bayott Enterprises. And so, from there, we averaged about 30 individuals who were placed into permanent employment. But we were really hoping for more, just because they were able to work with a lot of individuals. But I say this, where that particular program is more about day labor and providing day labor two days a week, understanding what their barriers are to employment, and trying to help them find employment, things of that nature, where sometimes it was hard to transition from, hey, I go from no work to two days a week, and now I'm supposed to find my own transportation and find a job. But what we wanted to do is build something a little bit more longer-lasting and a deeper impact. And so, we were hoping to reach about 25 to 30 individuals, but really try to get them into more permanent employment. So, as Lindsay alluded to, the point of this program is really to work more on certifications, apprenticeship, building their skills, doing all that, so they can be placed in more permanent employment. So, we don't have the data for that, but I think our goal is about 25 to 30, that we're no longer trying to reach wide, we're really trying to focus on reaching deep.
And the mobile services, how many from Westminster are using that?
From Westminster, I'd have to pull that. They only just share the numbers with me, because I haven't really asked for it. They only share the numbers with me in terms of like loads of laundry and unique clients. So, I'm not able to really address that, other than I know that they did, through October, they had 276 loads of laundry. I don't know what that means, though, in terms of numbers for Westminster.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, and you guys are doing great work.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Baker.
Thank you. If I could understand a couple of things. How do you go from a pit population of 472 to roughly 4,500? If you could help me understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the pit count, are you guys familiar with the pit count? It's a snapshot, one-day count of people experiencing homelessness. And really, that's only the number of people that you can count on that day. So, if you're not able to count them that day, if it's cold and you're not able to find them, you're not able to count them. Also, that only counts unsheltered individuals. So, what our number is that is for 4,500 people experiencing homelessness, that also includes those who don't have stable housing, who are living in hotels, as well as families who are doubled up.
Okay, so how did you come up with?
Oh, how did we come up with that number?
4,000 people that you couldn't count?
That's from our data, those who were entered in the Homelessness Management Information System.
And how is doubled up different than a roommate?
Lindsay, you want to take this HUD definition? Just because I know you got the HUD definition memorized.
I hope I have it memorized. I might be a little bit off. But it's folks that are living in crowded or unfavorable situations due to economic instability. So, you could, in some situations, make the argument that a roommate is a doubled-up person, but certainly not all situations. It's very much due to that economic instability.
So, how did you come up with the number of 4,000?
So, the Homelessness Management Information System is a database that they use all across the country and all across the state. And so, when anybody is enrolled into a homeless program or service, they do an intake through the Homelessness Management Information System. So, what that is, is the number of people who are actively enrolled in a homeless program or service in our county. Does that make more sense?
So, we counted 500 pit people, and we have 4,000 people in some homeless service agency?
Correct. Completely different data sets.
Gotcha. Okay. What's going to happen when the extra money goes away?
That's a very good question, because that's something that we always talk about with our Board of County Commissioners. This is why, you know, we have funding for a lot of these programs over the next few years, but we're certainly talking about what sustainability looks like for those programs. So, we're constantly having conversations with the nonprofit organizations that we're working with and looking at potential grant opportunities. Some of the programs that we did list up there, those homeless services programs, our employment program, things of that nature, those that did not have asterisks, those are all actually funded through our general fund. The ones that are funded through our ARPA, the tranche $2, as well as the tranche $1, are more of the earmarked dollars that we have for tiny home villages, as well as, what else is on there? Our mobile mental health, but that's funded for another three years. But for us, it's important to have a proof of concept for those programs before determining how we want to proceed.
Okay. We can, where we don't have the counting for trends in number of homeless, we do have the trend for dollars spent. Where do you see that going?
Can you please explain?
You spent $100,000 in 2019, $250,000, two-and-a-half times increase, $750,000, three-times increase, and I forget what the rest were, but ending up at 1.3 million.
Yep.
So, are we going to see this continuing doubling for the next 10 years?
No, that's actually a really good question. We're actually on our board retreat in a couple of months. We are working with our Board of County Commissioners to determine the final budget that we will have for swap moving forward, just because I think we've reached the point where we're pretty much at capacity in terms of what makes sense for us to reach the right number of residents and as many as residents as possible, as is fiscally efficient. So, for us, based off of, again, we go back to the proof of concept. When we initially launched this program, it was, okay, well, let's see what this looks like. And so, we distributed 88 vouchers, I think, from February through April in 2020. As we developed more hotel partners, and we found more needs, and we had more navigators who were able to find individuals experiencing homelessness, we were able to shelter a lot of individuals. Now, we're getting to the point where we're trying to find what that cap is and what that number is.
So, is the, is your program going to lessen the number of homeless people?
That is our hope. Because one of the, as Lindsay had pointed out, one of the things that we had changed beginning in February is to distribute vouchers to people experiencing homelessness for the swap program. We wanted them to be connected to an Adams County navigator. By being connected to an Adams County navigator, they are connected to an individual who can then connect them to other resources and services that might be available to them.
And do you have any of the really, of the really explanation as to the differences on racial lines, like 4% of the county is Asian, but zero people are homeless that are Asian and who I am?
Yeah, we actually do. I didn't bring those numbers with me, but Lindsay, do you have any of that, those numbers memorized?
I don't have it memorized, but-
We don't have it memorized, but we can certainly pass that along, because we actually do have charts and graphs on that. Tried to limit it to 10 slides regarding racial disparities for people experiencing homelessness. So, we can certainly pass that along to City Manager Freitag.
Okay, but you don't have any general, all, overall, really explanation?
Yeah, we have some general.
Yes, I do have some general information on this. People who are black or brown, they are overrepresented in people experiencing homelessness. We don't find that to be quite as true for folks that identify as Asian or Latino. So, that's what we're finding right now. That's especially true in the city of Aurora, because they do have a more diverse population.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Mayor Protim.
First, thank you for joining us and for the presentation. I think in my five years in this realm, the thing that I've seen is the collaboration between the counties and the municipalities and realizing we can't deal with this problem in a silo. So, great presentation and information. One area I wanted to kind of dig into, if you have additional information, is around the mobile mental health. And so, just understanding, you know, that continuum of care that is needed for people who are experiencing mental health, which is plagued throughout the homeless community, what does that actually look like? And I know it looks like that's probably new, because that's ARPA funds. So, can you talk to me about like how you try to connect those folks to make sure there's the follow-up care? And what kind of care are they able to provide? Is it just counseling, or is it also medication management? Or what exactly are they able to do for folks?
Yeah, so we're really excited about mobile mental health, because we think it's going to fill a pretty big gap in our community. What we see right now from the Homelessness Management Information System is about 25% of folks report a mental health concern, and a little bit less than that, around 20% of folks report using drugs or alcohol, not to excess, but they just use them. But we do know this is a big concern for folks, whether you're homeless or not, in our community. Even in our community health survey for all residents of Adams County, mental health was the number-one concern. So, right now, with our existing providers, waitlists are very, very long, unfortunately. There is a nationwide shortage of licensed mental health professionals, and that unfortunately is also true for our community. We have established a partnership with Heart Counseling Center, and they have been able to shorten their waitlist so that we can get folks in for an appointment within a week as compared to within two months. So, that's made that problem a little bit better, but we're hoping to get to the point where we can provide services on the spot. One thing that's very encouraging to me is co-response programs and police departments, and I know you all have a co-responder program. That seems to be kind of taking root and spreading throughout the county as well. And so, if folks call the police, and it seems to be more of a mental health concern than a criminal concern, then they have a licensed mental health professional that is there to assist them.
Great. The other thing I wanted to ask about is you had stated about the link between domestic violence and homelessness. And so, from the county, and actually, also, I'm curious, since Kate's here from us, is that something that we're trying to link people to when they have instances of domestic violence? Because usually, that's an interaction with the police. And so, how are you trying to get to that place early on in the cycle, so it doesn't end up in homelessness and you're more breaking the domestic violence cycle versus entering a whole different problem?
Sure. So, domestic violence is a very complicated issue. I think with what we found from, again, Homelessness Management Information System is that domestic violence and familial instability are the two number-one causes, which is essentially the breakdown of a social structure. And so, what we're trying to do is head those things off early with our Eviction Prevention Committee, to make sure that people have these really tight-knit social structures in the beginning, so that doesn't happen. But of course, if it does happen down the road, we focus on what people self-report, rather than, you know, they're forced to report to the police officers or have a victim's advocate, because a lot of people don't feel comfortable reporting those experiences. And we know, based on the data, that there are a lot of people that enter homelessness from this instance, and also, a lot of people that do not report their circumstances. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, great.
That helps. I mean, I guess my takeaway from all this is, you know, that you guys are really focused on those upstream solutions on top of dealing with folks that are already kind of in the cycle. So again, I appreciate it and I appreciate you guys coming to share with us.
I see no more questions, but I can't thank you enough for the partnership. Kate, for all of your work that you do for Westminster and partner with these folks, you are a walking encyclopedia for us and of knowledge. So to all of you and all of our sister cities out there, I think it's only together that we can even begin to make a difference and you are showing that. So thank you so very much.
Thanks, Mayor and Council.
City Manager, next up?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilors. So our next presentation is about the Peak Rail Service Study. And so I'll invite Deborah Basket to come forward and then introduce our special guests.
I knew we had another distinguished guest in here.
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, Deborah Basket, Senior Transportation and Mobility Planner. Really happy tonight to bring you a couple of presentations from RTD and to welcome Director Vince Busek, who represents Westminster. And I'll let him talk a little bit more about that. But I want you to know what a true civic leader you have in front of you. Vince was first elected to RTD in 2018 and started serving in 2019. He was the Chair of the RTD Board last year. Not an easy job, given the challenges of the pandemic and the ridership crisis and the FAIR study and all the things that RTD has taken on in the past couple of years. But he has been an engaged civic leader for many years. I first knew him when he served on Broomfield City Council from 1999 to 2007. So he's been in your seats and understands what it's like to do the job of a city councillor. For the past six years, he's been on the Adams County Planning Commission as a member of Vice Chair and Chair. And he's a private attorney with over 30 years of experience in Chicago and Colorado and currently operates his own firm in Broomfield. So I wanted to say something funny and personal at the end. I know that Vince and Karen, his wife, travel. They're going to Scotland and Ireland in the six weeks. And in the meantime, they got a new greenhouse and they're frantically working to get their garden in. And the funny thing that I know about Vince is he's had to kill bull snakes a number of times. It's really a scary thing. He's got little grandkids, doesn't want anybody to get bit by a bull snake, so he cuts their heads off. With that, I give you Director Busek.
Thank you very much, Deborah.
And he honestly just moved to Westminster with his business. So welcome.
My office is now in the wonderful confines of Westminster, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney and staff. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. I'm going to give a brief presentation, overview of the agency, talk a little bit about the partnership program that's up and coming, a little bit about what Madam Mayor touched upon, which is our FAIR study and equity analysis. I will then turn it over to Patrick Stanley, who is our lead on the Peak Service, Northwest Rail Peak Service Study. So he'll give an in-depth presentation on that, and we'll be happy to take questions about any of this. So why don't we move to the next slide? Briefly about the agency, many of you in this room know a lot about RTD, some more than others. Created in 1969 by the Colorado General Assembly, we serve eight counties, 40 municipalities, 2,342 square miles. We are one of the geographically largest transit agencies in the country, roughly the size of Delaware. We have a publicly elected Board of Directors, one of only three transit agencies in the country to have an elected Board of Directors. We have 15 members of our Board of Directors. Each director serves an area that encompasses about 200,000 constituents. We have a number of modes of transit. You're probably aware of most of them, buses, light rail, commuter rail, and there's a difference, don't get it wrong. And we've got paratransit and microtransit as well. So we'll move on to the next slide, the partnership program. Next slide after that. So the why, so RTD has limited resources to provide enough transit that there is demand for, right? So especially true in light of the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. We, and all transit agencies around the country have been dramatically impacted with the loss of ridership to transit. Also, another thing that affects us is the way in which we get our money. So most of our budget is provided by sales tax. And sales tax, when the economy is good, sales tax collection is good. And when it's not, it's not. So our budget is dependent upon something that is incredibly variable and out of our control. And just so you know, of transit agencies around the country, about 23% of them, most transit agencies receive about 23% of their budget from state funding. RTD receives less than 1% of our budget from the state of Colorado. So hopefully something we can remedy there. But the R in RTD stands for regional, right? But we know there is a great demand for local transit services as well, but we just simply cannot provide everything in this district that we are faced with. So what we've created is a partnership program that works a lot like the Dr. Cog tip program. So you probably all know and you have representatives on our subregional service council. So what's going to be kicking off in the next couple of months with this program is a call for projects. So communities can submit applications. We are still currently developing criteria and ranking and so forth, criteria for that. They will submit applications to the subregional councils. Subregional councils will evaluate them and then pass them on to RTD with recommendations on who should, you know, rise to the top and get some of this partnership money that RTD is putting into its budget. I think this year, our budget is $2 million to start the partnership program. Hopefully that's going to rise because the need and the demand is there for more. So we'll be able to easily spend that kind of money. So that's going to be kicking off in the next couple of months. So like I say, you have people on our subregional council for this area. So we'll keep you guys apprised as to what's going on with that. We'll move on to the next slide and the next slide after that. The Systemwide FAIR Study and Equity Analysis, and Madam Mayor, you touched on this just briefly. This is something that's been in the works for quite some time. And I believe there may be some people up here that served once upon a time on the past program working group, which was a similar attempt by RTD many years ago to take a look at FAIRS and see if there's something we could do to simplify them and make them more affordable. And I believe one of the initial presentations and recommendations out of that working group of many years ago looks, is quite a lot like what's coming out of the FAIR Study and Equity Analysis, which is kind of interesting. But it took us a while to get there, but hopefully we're going to get there. So as Madam Mayor indicated, you know, there are barriers to transit that we don't need to be there. Complication is one and affordability is another. If you make your system so complicated that people can't understand it and when they go to the ticket vending machine and they can't figure out, am I going locally? Am I going regionally? Am I qualified for a discount? People tend to walk away and get back in their car and drive downtown. So the more you can simplify the process, the more you can make it affordable, the better. So we undertook this, this study a couple of years ago now, really, we kept talking about it. A lot of public input, a lot of stakeholder input. And we initially came up with these three conceptual alternatives. We've got the current one, we could stay there, but that wasn't really helpful. Then there were two different alternatives that tended to lower some of the FAIRS, some more dramatically than the other. We'll move on to the next slide, please. And what happened is more people began to think that a hybrid between that alternative A and alternative B would probably be a better fit for everybody. So here, on this slide, you see the current FAIR structure and this proposed draft that would show full FAIRS and the discount FAIRS. So this would reduce the full FAIR to $2.75 one way. Get rid of the local and regional distinction. Anywhere you want to go other than the airport is going to be $2.75 one way.
And that really helps this region because we were in the regional.
Yes, absolutely. So when you took a bus out of Wagon Road or the N line out of 124th, you were in a regional FAIR district. And one of the triggers for this study, I'll toot my own horn, is back in 2019, I and a number of other directors, when the N line was looking like it was going to open, created the Promotional FAIR Pilot Program that eliminated the regional FAIR on the N line for six months. So those last two stations on the N line were in a regional FAIR zone. So you're paying five and a quarter for those, or you go to 104th and you're paying $3 to get downtown. So we wanted to do this so that we could study the elasticity of FAIRS, right? To see if there's an impact on people riding from Eastlake versus riding from 104th. But then something happened and the pandemic hit. And we opened the N line in the middle of the pandemic, which was, I think, the only transit agency in the country to open a rail line during the pandemic. But good news, bad news, because there wasn't ridership and the numbers didn't help us in that study. So we really couldn't tell. But as we, as we hit that six month mark and FAIRS had to go back to the $5.25, ahead of that, we began thinking, what can we do to try to keep it at that local FAIR? Because people aren't going to be happy if they've been taking the N line and they get back on and it's five and a quarter now. So we worked with then Representative Kyle Mulica, now Senator Kyle Mulica, and sat down with our new, then new General Manager Deborah Johnson and talked about what we could do. And because we're governed in this world by the Federal Transit Administration, we've got a lot of hoops to jump through with them. And to change FAIRS for more than six months gets you out of this promotional kind of concept into a more full FAIR reduction. We've got to do this equity study and impact analysis. And we decided, well, let's not just do it for the N line, let's do it for the entire system. Because the entire system has other examples of lines where you have, you know, local and then, you know, 100 yards later, you got a regional stop, right? It just didn't make sense. So this is where we are now. The big one is, as Madam Mayor indicated, is the monthly pass, the proposal to reduce that to $88. And especially important for workers at Denver International Airport because you have a lot of workers that are frontline workers and don't make a ton of money. And reducing the monthly pass for them is going to, I think, have a huge impact. So next slide, please. Next steps. We're through a lot of this. Next month, the board is going to really be looking at this and authorize the release of the final, whatever we think is going to be the final proposal for further final comment under the FTA regulations. It'll come back to us in July for consideration and vote. And then we plan to implement it in January of 2024. Because if all, if things go as we think they may and we have this new FAIR structure, we've got a lot of internal things to change in our ticketing systems and all kinds of things. So first quarter 2024 is when that will be implemented. So I'm going to stop there. I'm going to turn this over now to Patrick Stanley, who is our lead on the Northwest Rail Peak Service Study. And we'll stick around for questions afterwards. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Busek. Appreciate that. Mayor, members of council. I will try to make this relatively brief. I know you have a pretty, pretty full meeting here today. So my name is Patrick Stanley. I'm the project manager for the Northwest Rail Peak Service Study. And I'll just kind of jump right into it here. Next slide, please. So what is the Northwest Rail? So this is a refresher for some of you. Some of you may know quite a bit about it, but we'll kind of go through it again here. So Northwest Rail was part of the Fast Trax program that was passed by voters in 2004. It's a 42-mile rail line that goes from Denver Union Station to Longmont, the first six miles of which were built and completed as part of the B line in 2016. That's an overhead electrified train that runs on RTD-designated track and RTD-designated control. So the rest of the 35-mile segment goes from the existing Westminster station all the way out to Longmont. And that runs on freight tracks themselves. So that's unique to RTD. We don't have any other, other train lines in the system that do that. So a little bit about the history, obviously talked about 2004, the Fast Trax vote passed. 2010, RTD did the environmental evaluation, which looked at a full service, full service scenario. They had 11 stations, full double tracking for the entire corridor and 55 trips a day. And because, you know, due to, you know, the lack of dedicated funding source at that time, it was not able to be implemented at the time of the EE was completed. In 2013 to 2014, we did the North Area Mobility Study, the NAMS report. That really looked at the Northwest Rail in, really kind of from a building out the full service, but doing it in segments. As part of that study, it was recognized that, again, due to funding scenarios and situations with the railroad agreements, that the Northwest Rail would be looked at as a long-term plan. But we did commit in that particular, in the NAMS, to do, continue to study the corridor and report back to the public periodically on what our findings are. 2016, talked about the B line opened up. And in 2017, really the concept of peak service started to come to the front. And it really kind of came really through the stakeholders in the Northwest area. And we'll get, I'll get in a little bit more specifics about the peak service in a second. Next slide, please. So what is, what is peak service? So really, what we're trying to do is assess the feasibility of running a more limited service between Denver Union Station and Longmont. So that would consist of three AM trains, weekday AM trains from Longmont to Denver in the mornings and then three evening peak trips back from Denver to Longmont in the evening. So we're also looking at, you know, partnering, looking at our local jurisdictions, potential other strategic partners. But right now, we're looking at, we're really working with our community stakeholders in the area to plan six new stations. We'll get into that in a second and where those are. And then we want to identify feasible locations for a maintenance facility up in Longmont. We are looking at a different technology for this particular corridor. And we're not going to be doing the electrified, overhead electrified system on this particular one. So we'll have a different fleet. And the commuter rail maintenance facility that we currently have for our commuter rail system is at capacity. We're going to coordinate with the BNSF and, you know, obviously they're a major player in this whole thing. They own the tracks. So we obviously have to coordinate with them and try to figure out what the impacts are to run on that existing track. We're evaluating potential vehicle types and technologies. And we're really looking at it more from a lens of what do we need from an operation standpoint and what type of fleet availability might be out there. And then, of course, we're exploring opportunities for strategic partnerships. And the one, the one that in particular that has been talked about is front range passenger rail. Next slide, please. So the new stations that we're talking about, the six new stations that are touched on, working from south, south to north, is the downtown Westminster station that's near 88th, not too far from here, Broomfield 116th, Flatiron, downtown Lewisville, Boulder Junction at Depot Square, and downtown Longmont. Next slide. So while we're leading the study, we are not doing this alone. I'd like to kind of give a shout out to our study advisory team, which is made up of everybody you see here on the, on the screen. There's been a lot of help to kind of give us some guidance and feedback to the study team. You know, together collectively, want to provide a safe, reliable and well-connected transit network. So why is peak service feasible for the Northwest Rail? So given the fact that we have funding constraints, doing something with a little bit less infrastructure, a little less operational cost, will allow us to bring something to fruition sooner rather than later. It's a little bit cost effective because we have less to build, we have, we would have less to operate. So it's, we look at it as a stepping stone for a larger service in the future. It allows us to accomplish a lot of the safety upgrades, things like positive train control, which is required for passenger rail. That would have to go in at the time, so we would lay a foundation that we could build upon for future, future service expansion. Peak service has been shown to be a workable solution in other urban areas. So we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel here. We can take lessons from some of those other locations, but there are, there are good examples of where a starter service came in and as ridership and demand grows, we're able, they're able to build on that service, which is what we're looking for here. And of course, it allows us to address some of the commuting, commuting demands for today while, again, laying that foundation for us to expand on in the future. Next slide, please. So when will train service start in my community? That's, that's the tough question. So this is a feasibility study at this point. We're looking at, really trying to find out what are the costs and what is the infrastructure needed to operate peak service on the BNSF freight tracks. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to determine what we call the common set of facts. And these are the design and construction costs, operational costs, what are the impacts and benefits of it? What are some strategic partnerships that we can, that we can look for, for this particular quarter that might allow us to move ahead on this? Next slide, please. So a little bit about the study. This is the study's schedule. Overall, we're looking at completing the study towards the end of the year. Overall, we're looking at completing the study towards the end of the year. This particular slide right here is from our consulting team, but we think it's, you know, the effort's probably going to go a little bit beyond what our consultant team's scope is. But basically, it's broken into five milestones. The first two milestones were really fact-finding exercises, so a lot of things have changed since 2010 when we did our EE, so we need to kind of take a step back and look at locations where maybe there was a, you know, where we had shown a park and ride is now got a development on it. So we need to identify what has changed, what is out there now, what are the existing conditions out there? So that was really study milestones one and two. We're currently towards the tail end of milestone number three, which is really trying to establish what the baseline configuration is for peak service. So what do the stations look like? Where are the platforms at? Where are the railroad sightings at? That sort of thing, kind of the picture of what peak service really is. And then from that, we want to take that information and look towards potential partnerships, look at some strategies to move forward, potential funding sources that might be available, and come up with some next steps and recommendations and options at the end of the day. Oh, and just want to touch real quick. Our first public open house you'll see here was actually in the first one. There to the left, the touch point, that was actually January 31st and February 2nd open house meetings that we had. Next slide, please. And then next slide also. So I'll go through a few of the numbers that we got from the open houses. First, I would like to appreciate, give some appreciation to the City of Westminster for allowing us to use their space for the second open house. Appreciate that. But a little bit on the numbers, the final attendance for both, these are in-person meetings that we had. We said the first one was on January 31st in Boulder. The second one is February 2nd here in Westminster. We had about 195 total attendees in person. This is one of the first in-person meetings we've done in a long time, as you can probably imagine with the pandemic. 120 of those showed up at the Boulder event and 75 in Westminster. Total, we had about 29 total cards that were filled out in the actual meetings themselves. But we did have a online meeting that ran just before the first open house to about two weeks after the second open house. And I had the exact content that we had in the open house, so people could go through and look at that meeting online at their own leisure, a little bit more flexible for people to do so. In that particular scenario, in the online meetings, we had about 3,300 total views, 173 completed surveys. In addition to that, on the RTD study website, we had about 352 people sign up for emails and provide comments. Next slide, please. So these early teams' takeaways are really, you know, right after the open house meetings, we had a debrief with our study advisory team, our SAT team, and kind of went, just kind of get a gut check of what we all heard. And a lot of the takeaways we got were, you know, generally, it was, I think, fairly well-received, both those items. There was some, I would say, tentative excitement from a lot of folks. But there, you know, there's definitely still some concern that we got some feedback about the peak service. And, you know, we got a lot of comments that, well, this may not work for me today, but this is something that, you know, if it expands, we're excited to see that we're talking about it, we're excited to see that maybe we can get our foot in the door, get a starter service going, and this could expand to be something that I could use in the future. We heard a few things about a reverse commute, you know, somebody that might be actually wanting in the morning, instead of coming in from Longmont, you know, might want to go the other direction, say maybe to Boulder or CU or even up to Longmont. We had some comments about some additional stations, particularly on the diagonal, State Highway 119, Gun Barrel and Niwot locations. A lot of curiosity about the potential partnerships of Front Range Passenger Rail and BNSF and what those might look like. Cost and ridership differentials between what the peak service concept and the full service concept might be. We had some concerns and questions about service for customers with a non-traditional commute time. So this might be somebody who's in the hospitality or service industry that maybe is going on an off time, off-peak time, or maybe they're going the opposite direction. Some questions about the growth around the station. What does that look like? Are we stressing out, will we end up being stressing out existing infrastructure that's there in that place? And what does the nature of that development look like? And then, of course, the big one is kind of what is the next step if Northwest Rail turns out to be cost prohibitive? So that was a big question we got. And so these are, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please. So community input is really when we started taking the comments that we got from the online meeting, and in the in-person meeting, we started taking a look at what the people actually told us. And a lot of it was very similar to what our takeaways were, but there were a few things in here we wanted to touch on. The, again, kind of a general optimistic tone that we got from the crowd in general. We had, you know, just some encouraging, I think, statements more than anything about us moving forward and about RTD's commitment towards still looking at the Northwest Rail and trying to find a solution. We found, had a number of comments, I thought was interesting, about people that were new to the area, and that either were excited, they didn't have any history with the Northwest Rail, were excited about it possibly coming to fruition. And there was a lot of interest, I think, from people that moved from here in the area that maybe came from a place with transit. So heard from quite a few of those folks. Station areas was still a concern with them as well, like we had noted earlier, you know, all the station locations, potentially additional ones, Niwot and Gun Barrel. Other topics that we heard from is integrated service options. So how does, how does the Front Range, or how does the Northwest Rail complement and tie into the existing transit systems in the area? And what does that look like? And how do those interconnections work? Of course, we're looking, we're working with our service planners to look at, you know, how bus routes might be possibly routed towards some of the new stations, how we might utilize Flex Ride as an example to kind of help some of those connections happen. Land use, and then really, this one from the public that we heard really kind of came, it was more about, you know, is this private, is it going to be private? Is it going to be public? If I'm an existing resident in the area, am I going to be pushed out? Because that was the type of questions that we heard when it kind of came to land use. And then, of course, we had some comments about construction, but that's, you know, obviously, a little bit, since we're in a study mode here, a little bit of ways out for that, but we did hear some concerns about what construction impacts might be. Next slide, please. So real quick, the survey, just kind of go through this relatively quickly here. This question was, please select all the reasons why the service would not meet your needs. And it's interesting, the first, really, the big ones here were related more towards actual service options, the direction, weekend service, you know, different directions, need evening service as an example, and the direction that we're going to. It is interesting to note that 60 people responded that there wasn't one that would keep them from using the service, so we found that kind of fascinating. And of course, kind of rounding out towards the bottom really is the station locations and availability to get to those station locations. Next slide, please. So the next question we asked was, what do we see as benefits of the peak service rail plan? And what I thought was interesting on this is really, it's, they're all pretty high. So, you know, that indicates that there's a lot of different reasons why people could potentially use the transit line. You know, the first two are really about automobiles, you know, avoiding congestion, reduce vehicle emissions. And then kind of from there, it's, you know, I like the reading and resting on the train. I've fallen asleep on the train myself, so I understand that one. New transportation opportunities, potentially a faster way to reach a destination. Then next, we've got safer way to travel, and then kind of rounding out towards the bottom are, you know, reduce transportation costs is kind of the end there. And that's really more of a personal transportation cost is what they're talking about there, so gas, parking fees, wear and tear on the vehicles, that sort of thing. Next slide, please. And then we asked the question for the Longmont Maintenance Facility, you know, what factors are more important to consider when evaluating a site for the proposed maintenance facility? And it's important to note that most people that answered this question actually don't live near the maintenance, proposed maintenance facilities that we're talking about up in Longmont. But nevertheless, they're good comments, and they're the type of comments that we would expect to see as planners and engineers and architects and that sort. Noise impacts was number one, air quality, emissions, traffic disruptions. And really, towards the end, we'll get into more, some of the more environmental questions about animal species, visual impacts, impacted private properties. Next slide, please. So next steps, so we're going to continue to define the initial footprint. We're, you know, we're not done with that effort yet. We're still refining what that looks like. We want to use the public input that we received on the first two open houses and take a look at that and see what that tells us, what might we need to change, what mitigations might we need to think of that we weren't thinking of. Want to keep compiling the draft, common set of facts. This is going to be an ongoing effort for us to go through this, which is what are the costs? What is the ridership? You know, what does it really mean to run peak service on the rail? We have an update to the RTD Board on April 11th, to the Planning and Finance Committee. And then our next public open house, we're looking around late spring, early summer. And that one will really start talking about kind of the completion of the Phase Three, which is the baseline piece, and then really start taking a look at some of the strategic partnerships and ways to potentially bring other people into the picture. So, next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation, and we will open it up for any questions that you have for either one of us.
Thank you. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. So how many people would this peak service serve a day? And I got the impression it's five days a week?
It is five days a week is correct, yes. We don't have those ridership numbers just yet. We are still working on that, and that's part of the common set of facts. So as we kind of move through all the various impacts, we'll get to that number, but we don't have it quite yet.
Could you give us a ballpark?
Anyway, I would probably prefer not to at this time. And the reason I say that, I'm not, it's not that we're trying to hide it, but we want to make sure that the figures that we provide to the public are correct and have been vetted. What we don't want to have happen is people taking a number and running with it that maybe not, that is maybe not accurate.
Well, just from my point of view, you're going to run three trains a day?
Yes.
Once?
Round trip, yep.
Up and once back. And these are heavy diesel electrics, and you're going to have four cars and a train, right?
Well, I, a couple of things there. So we don't know the technology. So right now, what we're saying is we don't want, really, the only one that we've eliminated as a technology is the overhead-powered system. Now, today's technology, diesel is probably more likely. However, we're not eliminating any of the other possibilities, and it's battery and hydrogen, you know, that, those technologies are emerging, so it's possible that that technology may be there by the time, you know, when we build this. So I can't say that it's necessarily going to be a diesel electric.
And how many people could you fit into a train car or into a train?
A train car seated, Keith, help me out with the numbers, 100? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I should introduce Keith. Keith is our deputy project manager for the project and...
My apologies. Typically, it can be between 175 and 250, depending on the car, on the car type.
Depending whether you're sitting and standing as well, so.
Okay, and how many cars in a train?
Well, we would be looking, you know, really, what I think is probably driving the train is really a BNSF requirement for 12 axles, which we require, and it's a track signaling issue. That would, that would...
12 axles would be three cars.
That would be a minimum of three.
Gotcha.
Minimum of three.
Okay. And are these cars all self-driving, or is there one prime mover car and the other two are towed, or three are towed?
I'd say we don't know the answer to that yet. It could be, it could be a multiple unit, multiple-powered unit. It could also be, you know, it could be that a locomotive and coach scenario could be, could be a better fit. So we're still going through those, through that analysis.
And really, how long would, okay, the commute take?
The commute from Longmont to Denver is a little over an hour.
So to...
Mid-sixties.
200 folks in a car, you're going to have half of them standing for an hour?
Depends on how many cars we have, yeah. We're not saying, we're not saying that it was going to be exactly three cars. It could be a four-car train as well, so.
Do, is like the purpose of this to bring really commuters into Denver or out of Denver?
Peak service is set up more for a commuter-type scenario with Denver as the destination hub.
Point of destination, okay. Because the first mile, last mile problem is not solved, would you be building big parking, I mean, the facilities at each of the stations like we have at the Westminster Station?
It's a little bit of a mix. So for one, the parking, parking demand is not quite as high as the full service, but we already are working with Longmont as an example for a parking structure there that really serves more than just the rail. It'll also serve State Highway 119, BRT. But, so that's, that is a parking structure that we're looking at for that in partnership with Longmont. But Boulder, as an example, doesn't really want any additional parking. We do, we are looking for parking here at Westminster, but it's not going to be as large as what we have it here at 72nd and Lowell parking ride.
Well, I mean, you have the really capacity at 72nd and Lowell because, well, the City of Westminster spent a whole lot of money expanding the capacity, right?
Yes, well, we did have a partnership with Westminster where we provided basically the funding that we were going to use to do a surface lot. We provided that to the City of Westminster so that they could also...
Add on all the structured parking.
We originally had a surface lot, yes, yes.
Okay. And what is going to be the impact of the really dramatic decrease in the demand for office space if this is a destination Denver thing? Because isn't the vacancy rate in Denver now like 20%, 25% office-based vacancy?
It is definitely lower at this point, but, you know, I can't stand here right now and say that I know exactly what's going to happen in the future. I mean, currently, yes, it is. There is definitely a pandemic impact. Whether or not that's going to bounce back, I'm not sure. I mean, I think if you ask a lot of experts, they say maybe it's going to end up being an ultimate hybrid, but I don't know, I don't have this, I don't have the crystal ball on that. I don't think RTD does at all. I don't know exactly how that's going to mesh out any more than anybody else here does. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive what the impact's going to be ultimately in the long run for that.
How much, how much difference in really capital costs would there between building a peak service plan and a full service plan?
That's actually what the study is trying to identify. So we don't know what that number is yet for peak service, and that's the common set of facts that we're trying to establish as part of this study. So we don't, we don't know what that number is just yet.
So a lot of unknown questions, and we're building it for no more than 3,000 travelers a day, five days a week, roughly, ballpark.
I don't know what that final ridership is.
Thank you.
Counselor Nubell?
Thank you for your presentations. I will just highlight one thing I heard of Dr. Cog about the RTD new fare, proposed fare, and that is that even if you don't get a monthly pass, if you spend, if you do a certain number of trips, then it just kind of automatically flips you into the monthly pass and you don't have to pay anymore.
You'll be capped at that, at that level, yeah. We'll never spend more than that, so.
I thought that was a good feature. Okay, so I similarly had a question to Counselor Baker with respect to just what the difference was between the startup service, because I'm hearing, you know, you have to have some paired tracks for, to allow for the BNSF, you know, the maintenance facility and just the train purchase, so it sounds pretty much like an investment that you'd want to make for something bigger. So can I ask, with respect to, I'm just seeing which question I want to ask. I'll start with the peak service. Will it impact the service that will be provided? So right now, we have the Sheridan Park and Ride and the Flatiron Flyer service. I know it has been pulled back a little bit with COVID. Would it be pulled back even further if we had this Northwest Peak Service?
Yeah, so just, so just real quick on the service, I just want to make a note of this, the system optimization plan that RTD recently approved is looking to bring some of that service back, and I just want to note that, by 2027. It may not be entirely back to pre-pandemic levels, but it is significantly increasing it back from what it is now, and that will affect some of the Flatiron Flyer routes. So just, just a little information there. It is not our intent at this point to take away any service from one of the other ones. I think we're really looking at... ones, I think we're really looking at Northwest Rail as more of a complimentary service that can provide additional transit options in the area. So, you know, it may be that, like we talked about, maybe your return back, if you come into DUS, you take the train, but, you know, it might be a scenario where you hit, where you take the bus back, if you're not coming back on peak service, so, we're looking at it more in that vein, that it's more of a complimentary additional option for the Northwest Rail. So, we haven't had any discussions to reduce anything else.
Okay. With respect to, did you have another?
No, no, that's fine, that's good, sorry, yeah.
With respect to, you were talking about how some of the community input was saying, well, I do the reverse commute, and with our knowledge of, you know, how, you know, we don't have as much of a density of employment right now in Denver, are, have we looked at current trends with the Flatiron Flyer and the directional use of that service, and could that help us understand, is it still primarily Denver-centric, or is there, you know, is there a strong enough reverse commute to argue, or rethinking, or?
You know, I don't know if Director Busek knows, but, but from my standpoint, I don't know that we've done a, a full study on that, I can certainly look into it, and we can, we can get back to you on that.
Would that be, I mean, you want to have some justification for the directionality of your peak service, so would that not be something you would fold into your study?
There was a, a brief study that was done at RTD internally that looked at some different options for the peak service, and really, the, the peak service as we have it lined out now had the most ridership. These were pretty initial numbers back in the day, one of them was kind of full, I think, full peak, full, one line that went back the other opposite direction, and then there was another one where they actually, there was a exchange of, a transfer in trains at Boulder, so you could actually come back to Boulder, and then there was another link that went to Boulder, but none of those had the, the performance that the, the configuration that we're looking into has, has right now.
And that was pre-COVID?
That was pre-COVID, yes.
Yeah, so I would highly suggest we just look and verify the, what would be best. Will BNSF have priority on the rail line?
Uh, no, actually, so, the way this, the way that we're talking with the BNSF right now is they would, they would need to build some siding tracks, these siding tracks are a little over a mile long or so, right now, they've told us four, we're still talking with the BNSF about where those are and how many, so we'd like to try to reduce them if we can, but, the idea being that they would pull over onto the siding tracks during our peak period time slot, so that we would have priority operations during that time, so we would not be stuck behind a coal train, we wouldn't be dependent upon their schedule during those time slots. Good question.
So, two more questions, thank you. With respect to the station facilities that would be contemplated for each city, I do recall years ago, when the original EIS was completed, all the station designs had surface parking, and we're kind of contemplated with more of a suburban park and ride orientation, and for us, for example, in downtown Westminster, we have much denser vision for the area, more of a walking, you know, a walk-to station versus parking, so how, I'd like to see more flexibility with working with cities to determine how that, how the stations are actually parked?
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, we, we are working with, like I said, our study advisory team is made up of individuals from all the, all the stakeholders, and we're listening to what their input is, and what their, what their community wants, you know, I think we'd love it if we could have more TOD-type, type parking scenarios rather than surface lots as well, but that's obviously something we need to work out with, with the communities and jurisdictions to figure out exactly what that looks like.
Okay, and then one last question, and it goes back to just the, the community input and the justification for the services, could we look at, is there, if there's a demand for weekend service? So, and since people said they were interested in it, and, you know, we do have a lot of events, we have some data that we can look at for, for Westminster at least, with our Westminster Station service?
Yeah, we'll be looking into that, I mean, we want to take, obviously, we want to take the, the public's comments seriously, and take a look at that, I will say that we, we have a pretty definitive charge from the board to take a look at what, what the peak service as it's defined is, so some of these options might be defined as more of a future, next steps type option. Keep in mind as well, one of the, one of the concepts with peak service that we're trying to get to is, you know, I kind of equate it to, you've got a shopping bag you're trying to carry home, and, you know, you want it, we're trying to get that shopping bag so that we can carry it a little bit easier, and, you know, the more we add into it, the more expense goes into, you know, the more weight goes into that bag, and it becomes a heavier lift, so that's something that we need to balance from RTD to make sure that we're providing a service that serves as many people as we can, while still making it a more manageable step forward.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, I haven't been following RTD in the last two years as I have in the last decade, so.
We miss you.
Maybe less stress on my part, I don't know, but I appreciate the work that you do. One of the, one of the, or one of the primary questions I have is, do we have buy-in from BNSF, working so closely with them over the years, it's been very, very, very difficult, even City of Westminster knows how difficult it has been to work with BNSF, so, do we feel, do we feel confident that we do have a partnership with BNSF?
Yeah, partnership might be a little bit of a strong word with the BNSF, but I do think we're in a pretty good place with them, we've had several pretty productive meetings with them, we are actually very close to getting them on a contract to do 30% basic engineering for us, and do some cost estimating for operations and for the capital costs, so, they are willing right now, and, you know, I think, I don't have any reasons to believe that they're not going to continue that, I think, you know, I don't want to speculate too much on their side of why they're, why they're doing it, but I also think that the potential for Front Range Passenger Rail also has their attention as well, and so a potential partnership with us and Front Range Passenger Rail, I think, is maybe a little bit of a motivation for them at the moment.
Perfect. The partnership program that we are looking at, can you talk to me a little bit more about that, because I hesitate only because of the relationship that we have with DTP, Denver Transit Partners.
Okay, so Northwest Rail question, right?
I'm switching gears a little bit, sorry.
I'm sorry, so can you, you mind repeating the question for me again?
Yep, just the partnership program that Mr. Busek had brought up, as far as what we're moving forward, and you had mentioned it in our rail, possible for the peak study, what does that look like for our public-private partnership, P3, especially with the relationship that we've had with Denver Transit Partners? Do we feel confident that these partnerships will be a good thing moving forward?
So, it seems like we're talking about two different things, so, the partnership program that I spoke about is a separate and distinct program that we've just put into place, that talks about partnering with local jurisdictions to, to provide localized transit services within communities, so, not really related to-
Not private?
Not related, yeah, not related to the Northwest Rail and DTP and things like that, and I, my understanding is our relationship with DTP is, is okay, notwithstanding recent developments.
Thank you.
I could touch a little bit on the, on the Northwest Rail as it relates to DTP, so, you know, we, we understand that there's a potential impact to them and their operations right now, we're trying to look at a couple of different operational scenarios right now that might, that hopefully minimize that impact, we, you know, it's, the, the, the least we can do to impact a, a contract that we already have, where they're already running a potential service, or a service, you know, that, we want to try to keep that intact as much as we can, it's not in our really best interest, I think, to, to open back that, open that back up and have other negotiations about it, so we're trying to minimize the impact, so that hopefully we don't have to do that.
Thank you. And then, do we feel, and I guess this, this is more maybe not even a, a question, but more of a concern I have just from inside our baseball, is the cost, the build-out, there was drainage issues and concerns moving forward with, with this rail, Northwest Rail, who would be responsible, who would have the ownership, who would be maintaining it? Because once we're using it, who's, what's, what's the ownership piece of it on either side? I know these are all items that you're going to flush out as part of the study, but these are just things that are coming top of mind, listening to just the initial information. There was another question I had that stemmed off of Counselor Nubella's with the change of service, so, about three times a year, RTD does ridership changes, whether it's to mainly increase efficiency in the system, would we have to go to BNSF every time that we do a rail service change, for adding service, multiple trips a day, reducing trips, would we have to go to them for approval every time we did that?
I, probably yes, you know, the, the reality is, we're going to, if we enter in an agreement with them to do peak service, that's a pretty defined operations, they're obviously, you know, they're owner of it, they have a business to run, so anytime that we're going to do a change to that service, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have to talk with them again on, on what that looks like, so. You know, it's, it's kind of a nature of running on their tracks that, that we're beholding to them to some degree, obviously, on, on what we can do, and what that agreement looks like. Now, we might be able to build some flexibility into that agreement potentially, and that's something we can think about, look at, that maybe there is, are some next step expansions that we can think about, try to foresee, and potentially at least have a, have a plan in there for doing that, but, yeah, it's, it's not going to necessarily be, I think, a super easy process every time.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all my questions.
I just want to remind everybody that the three stations we have, from where we formed those in 2004 to where they are today, one of them has built out with rail and transit in mind, and has four big new apartment complexes that people can walk to either the bus or the rail. We already have the parking in place for that one, and then with the downtown that was scraped and is coming out of the ground, we have people there that we didn't exist in 2004, because it was all commercial. So, many of us along the corridor took it seriously, our people are spending their tax dollars and have been paying since 2004, and you know all that, because I hammer that all the time, but it's a little bit too bad we don't have the Front Range Passenger, because you can't talk about this without them, because they're talking to Amtrak, and Amtrak, you are correct, everything I've learned, the reason I'm excited about all of these conversations going on right now, is Amtrak really sort of has a trump card, because they have access to that rail, and no one can tell them no. So, that is a little bit different twist, and we haven't had that before, and also, tell me if I'm wrong, everything I've heard to this point in all of our meetings, there really isn't duplication, you're all learning from each other, and whichever direction it goes, the money either you're spending right now to do what you're doing, or the Front Range Passenger Rail, all of the information is helping the whole thing to hopefully get done one way or the other.
Yeah, so we have, you know, pretty regular, ongoing conversations with Front Range Passenger Rail and CDOT, they sit on our study advisory team, so they're hearing exactly what we're doing, we're ahead of them right now in the study process, their study is a little bit behind ours, but, you know, obviously, we're feeding all the information that we're getting, that we're doing over to them, you know, to help complete that picture. Now, we do need to look at RTD, just so we have it, what would it look like if we, if Front Range Passenger Rail was not there? And just so we know that, what that information is, but I do think the Front Range Passenger Rail potentially opens up a lot of doors that may not be available to us today, so that's one reason why we're looking pretty hard at that.
And with all of this transportation, I go to all the meetings, but I am just the face for council, it is Deborah Basket, where she go, Deborah Basket and all of our staffs across this region that work in partnerships, and they are truly our backbones, we're just the pretty faces, and I just can't thank them enough for all the work they do with you all, and many, many, many meetings they go to, so that we can go to DC and, and tell people, this is why we need this, this, and this, it's these folks that do all that hard legwork, so, I just want to recognize all of our staffs, but especially Deborah, here in Westminster, for what she has done over the years, and I know she worked at Broomfield, but we're a tight-knit group, and have been for almost 25 years, so, it's very unique, and we speak with one voice, so that's what's been great, too. I can't thank you both enough for coming, and we look forward to what the future might hold.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel.
Do you need a break? Okay, five-minute break.
...
We're ready to go.
So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, councilors. Uh, our third and final presentation, uh, tonight, uh, is, uh, on the decision by Jefferson County Schools, uh, to close three elementary schools or three schools here, um, in Westminster. And so, um, this is an update on that, um, for the council and certainly for the community. And so, uh, I'd ask Economic Development Director Lindsay Kimball to come up, um, and introduce our special guests.
Great. Thank you very much, City Manager Freitag, Lindsay Kimball, Economic Development Director. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. Tonight we have with us Lisa Rilu, Chief of Strategy and Communications. We also have Danielle Glover, Vice President for CRL, and Roger Sherman, Partner with CRL. And CRL is the consulting firm that was chosen by Jeffco Public Schools to assist them with the disposition of these schools and, in fact, all of the schools throughout, uh, Jefferson County. Uh, they're here to provide an overview of Jeffco Public Schools' school closure process, their community engagement priorities, the current status of the three school properties specifically in Westminster, which again are Sheridan Green Elementary, Wittemore Elementary, and Zurgar Elementary, which has most recently been occupied by Darrell Academy on a temporary basis, and a timeline for the disposition of those properties. City staff, um, we're, we're happy to share with you, has been engaged with Jeffco Public Schools staff since late last year and will continue to work with them to find appropriate reuse, reuse options for the properties, um, that are compatible and embraced by the surrounding neighborhoods. In particular, um, would like to point out Sheridan Green, you may already know, has a reverter clause that conveys the property back to the city once school operations cease. And staff is working very closely with the team at Jeffco Public Schools to help them with a smooth transition. And, uh, we will be coming back to this board, uh, at a later date, um, probably in the next, uh, couple of months, with an intergovernmental agreement to allow them to properly close down the school, remove items, and make sure that it's a, a, a smooth transition and not something abrupt. Um, and in fact, uh, as part of the collaboration, city staff will be visiting, um, the Sheridan Green site next week to gain a better sense of what options might be appropriate. Um, so again, they're doing a physical site visit, so we are very actively engaged. And of course, just, we're very early in the process. You'll hear from them specifically on their timelines, but, um, you know, there's a lot to de, I would say, you know, decommissioning some of these schools or transferring them to some other use. So it will be, um, a process as expected. And, um, some of those items, um, as we're working with them, we'll, of course, we'll keep this body, um, up to date and informed. Um, but for tonight, let me turn it over to Lisa Rilu, who will begin the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, the present, do I move the present? Oh, somebody moves it for me. Okay, perfect. Um, thank you all for having me this evening, um, and thank you to Ms. Kimball for the introduction. Um, so I'll talk to you all a, a little bit about our property disposition process. I wanna start, um, on the first slide with, um, our, our, the process that we went through to close schools. So, um, unfortunately, uh, you know, closing schools is the hardest work that any school district has to do. Um, it's not work that we wanted to do, but over the past two decades, um, enrollment in Jeffco Public Schools has declined. And, uh, we had gotten to a point where we had so many, um, small elementary schools in particular that we really felt that the, um, the, the student experience was suffering, um, based on the, the, on, in our very under-enrolled schools. And so, we undertook the work, um, to really look at enrollment across our schools and how we can conduct a consolidation process that would, um, provide students with more opportunities in the school, in, in school and also, um, ensuring that our staff also ha, were having thriving experiences. And a lot of our small schools, there are split grade levels, so, um, there aren't enough kids, for example, to have a third and fourth grade, so they have a combined third and fourth grade. Um, there's oftentimes one teacher at a grade level where that teacher doesn't have anyone to collaborate with. Um, so these are all things that we took into consideration as well as the fact that we were having to take resources away from more, um, better enrolled schools, um, in order to supplement the small schools that we had. So, um, it was a very difficult process. Um, we, I don't know if you've had a presentation from the state demographer, but it's very helpful to see sort of the, the demographic patterns, um, in Colorado, across the nation. I just, um, attended a presentation with the state demographer where they talked about the fact there are a million fewer people in the United States, uh, States under the age of 18 over the past decade. So this is something that not, that's not just happening here in Colorado, it's happening across the nation, and so, um, we've been addressing it. So because of the, um, school closures, we, um, our board voted in November to close 16 schools. And, um, we, what, that, what's, the result of that is, um, that we have, uh, we, we, one of the schools is turning into an early childhood center next year. And then, um, we have another school that, in Evergreen, that won't close until the end of next year. So we have about 13 properties, um, right now. In addition, we are also, um, we have land and other things we've, we're looking at. One of the properties we're gonna, the property we're gonna be talking to, about tonight has actually been closed as a traditional Jeffco Public School since 2012. Um, and the other property, which is Narvada, uh, was closed, um, as part of an urgent emergency closure, um, decision in 2021. So that's what we're starting with.
When you need a next slide, just say next slide and the ma, magic will happen.
Thank you. Um, okay, we can go to the next slide, please? So we, um, in Jeffco Public Schools, our bread and butter is, um, is educating children. Uh, so we are not, uh, we don't deal regularly in the disposition of property or the sale of real estate. So we have surrounded ourselves with an excellent team. Uh, we are engaging, uh, real estate, uh, legal services as well as a broker. And then, of course, CRL, um, is helping us to work with, um, our municipalities, this many municipalities that we have in Jeffco, um, to support our work to better understand the needs and desires of the municipality in this disposition process. If you can go to the next slide, please? Um, so i- in, in our process, basically, our board has to vote twice. Um, they first have to vote that they agree that we are no longer going to need a building for educational purposes. They did this, uh, last week or the, the week before for Zurgar and Allendale. Um, and so that is the, that process, once they, they surplus, it kicks off this, um, very complicated process that we have up here that you can see. Um, that includes, of course, uh, working with our municipal partners and then going out to the, to communities as well. We'll be accepting proposals. Um, our main, um, we, we do need to sell or lease properties. That is, that's our main objective because we need to bring in resources that, um, we can use to support our students. While the resources that we bring in either from a sale or a lease will have to go towards capital improvements, they will allow us to diver, to defer our, um, the, the, um, what we contribute from our general fund into our capital fund, which is about $20 million a year. Well, the sale of property will, we're hopeful, will allow us to defer some of that to be able to spend, um, some more resources on students in our schools, especially as Esser, uh, the Esser funding, um, the financial aid from the government related to COVID. And then, um, that we also are truing up in terms of our enrollment with the, with the state. And so we have some revenue, um, issues that we're gonna encounter and we're hopeful that the sale of property can help us to continue to provide the kind of experience we wanna provide for our students. If you can go to the next slide, please? So our community engagement priorities, um, are as follows here. We're gonna collaborate with our municipal partners, communicate transparently with our immediate neighbors and provide public access to information through the Jeffco website. Um, and the first two, um, primary reasons we bought on CRL to support our work in doing that. We're gonna host a minimum of two community meetings to allow the public to hear about the disposition process and provide input on proposals and feedback. And we'll publicly seek proposals for use and solicit local representation on an, on an advisory committee. If you can please go to the next slide. Um, so the Property Disposition Advisory Committee is made up of the following people who are listed here. Um, and I believe that, um, Parker, Parker Brown actually, um, lives in this area, um, and he's part of our committee. But we will be adding on, um, two to four local advisory members, so folks who live in the neighborhood, surrounding area. And we're working with our advisory committee right now to, to define a process for how we'll accept applications for local residents to apply to, be on the committee and, um, help to evaluate proposals. Go to the next slide, please? You'll see here that, um, on our website, which is listed at the top of every, um, every slide here, we have three properties in, um, the Westminster area that, um, will be, uh, that right now, we're considering, um, that there, there's only one in the surplus process. You see Zurgar at the very bottom. Sheridan Green, as Ms. Kimball talked about, um, will revert to the city of Westminster. And then, um, Witte, uh, is another property, but that is not in this, in, in process yet. We are still also determining our internal needs for space and the needs that some of our other schools, like option schools, um, may have in terms of wanting to, um, potentially be in a different property that might, in a building that might be, um, more, uh, have a higher, uh, quality building than they have now. So we're still doing an internal assessment. So right now, the only, only, uh, building in process is Zurgar. And then if you can go to the next slide, please? Um, so we, um, as you can see here, this just sort of shows, um, what I just talked about in terms of where we are in progress. Um, and then the next slide, uh, we, when we talk to the board about surplusing, these are the criteria that we've used, at least for these first two properties, that students affected by the closures have been successfully accommodated elsewhere. And that is true for the students who live in the Zurgar boundary since 2012. Um, also true for our Allendale property, that operational schools within the 3.5-mile radius have adequate space for more students, and they do. And the long-term enrollment projections do not indicate significant growth. And that is also true in the case of Zurgar. Um, so now I'm gonna move on to timeline on the next slide. So we, um, have been meeting, um, as Ms. Kimball said, with Westminster city leaders. Um, we are going to, we're in process with CRL on, um, organizing our first community meeting, which we'll be, uh, working with your communications team to also share information about. And we'll also host a pre-proposal meeting for folks. Um, and then you can see that we, our review really takes us through July. And then in August, we, um, anticipate that we will be, um, our cabinet will be, and superintendent will be making recommendations to our board around, um, who we will be entering into negotiations with. They don't have, the board does not have to vote again until, um, we, until we have a final proposal and they're determining what is going to happen to the building. But we'll be keeping our board, um, up to speed and letting them know, uh, where we are in terms of the negotiations process. And we also anticipate that, um, there will be public information available about each, about the proposals that are being considered. Um, and then the next slide, um, anticipates that we will have, um, at least three and likely more, uh, rounds of property disposition. So, um, with this first one is right now, we have two schools in process. The next time we will be recommending schools, uh, or properties for surplus will be in August. And then we anticipate another round in January and probably future rounds as well, given how much, um, how many buildings we have to, uh, potentially offer. So that is my presentation to you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilor Nermella?
So, just a question about can, really more for the city, too. Um, can, can we set parameters over the type of use that we'd like to see there? Or is that just, I would imagine for Sheridan Green, since we'd be, um, owning the property, that we would have more, um, choice over what happens on that specific property versus Zurgar?
Just jump in, Lindsay Kimball. Um, yes, so it still is, it needs to be compatible with the current zoning at the site. So it's, um, public, quasi-public for all of these sites. And of course, the site coming back to the city, we would, um, have full, um, authority and discretion, this body, over the use.
When would we talk about the type of use that could go there?
If I may, Mayor, um, so I think that, uh, you know, right now, this is kind of the first blush. This is the first time, uh, that I'm seeing, uh, this information. It's the first time that you all are seeing this information. And so, you know, when it comes to Sheridan Green, my, you know, I think there's gonna have to be significant community engagement because there's a neighborhood, you know, right there. And we're gonna need to get, uh, you know, some input from the neighbors. So, um, that's kind of a, a significant piece of this. Um, and, uh, and then, you know, perhaps some community input on, you know, what people see as the need. But it's gotta be balanced with the fact that we're gonna plunk something new and have a change inside a residential neighborhood. So I see a large, over the next 90 days, um, you know, community input and discussion. Um, probably, uh, you know, if the decision to actually make the transfer is, you know, call it, uh, mid to late summer, um, from the school district back to the city, whatever that looks like. Because there's a timeline that's gonna be associated with moving, uh, you know, a school property out, you know, and returning that. I don't know what that timeline looks like, and I don't know if we've gotten that yet. Have we gotten that yet?
So I will tell you, we have 15 buildings to clean out.
Yeah.
Um, it is a huge endeavor. Um, we are prioritizing, ensuring we get the highest quality furniture out and to our others, to serve our students that we have for the summer and that, across the district. Um, so i- it's gonna take a couple of months, um, for, we, we, we did offer the building with things in it, but apparent, but you guys would like to clean this, clean it out, I believe.
Yeah, clean it out, please.
Um, so, um, it, you know, I, I, it will be a little bit into the fall, um, but we'll have a better sense of that. I mean, again, this is our first time, um, lo, dealing at this scale with this issue. And so, um, we'll just, our, our commitment is to keep you posted. And, um, uh, you know, but certainly, um, yeah, I'll just say we'll keep you posted. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, thank you very much. And then to, uh, Economic Development Director, uh, Kimball's comment, you know, she commented about an IGA of what does this transition period look like? So I think there's a period of time where we're, you know, getting community input and feedback. There's a time where we're essentially working through a transition of, a transfer of property. Um, and then we're executing whatever it is the city, uh, wants to do with the Sheridan Green property. The other properties I would offer, you know, those belong to the school district and until the school district disposes of them, you know, the city may want to buy those, we may not. Um, you know, but there also might be other, um, private developers that are interested in doing something with those. in doing something with those properties. And so those two are in different categories, if you will, than the Sheridan Green property. We have a little bit more control over that.
I would hope that for the Sheridan Green property, we put some of our values into place and our, our needs into place. So, you know, I would love to see us evaluate a senior residential care facility that could provide a continuum of care. These schools have kitchens and other facilities that are kind of similar to what might be needed. So just to think creatively about how we can actually meet some of our needs. And I saw that demographics presentation. I keep like too ad nauseam to my council colleagues mentioning that we have a, we'll be doubling our senior households. And we need to be thinking proactively about how we can accommodate them.
Thanks. Councilor Baker?
I would assume Sheridan Green is about, what, 20,000 square feet?
You know, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can, I can certainly get it for you.
Do you know how much it costs you to maintain the building? To heat it and mow the lawn?
I'm sure, yes, our facilities department has that information. I, I don't have it on me. I apologize.
Right. Cause that'd be valuable information.
Absolutely.
You may have given it to us already.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure if we have. Again, this is sort of our first go at this as well. So, but we can certainly get you a profile of, of the Sheridan Green building and, and the costs and things, and things like, the things that we know about the building.
Okay. And isn't there any charter school who would like to use this facility? Because charter schools run through you guys and that would maintain the original purpose.
So they, they don't always run through us. So they can be authorized by Jeffco or they can be authorized by the Colorado CSI. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the, what that stands for.
Yeah, but at the state level.
Yeah, the state level. So.
Online charter schools are authorized.
Yeah. They would have to be authorized by our board to either expand or a new charter school to come into our district. And we anticipate, at least through, if that would happen with our, with the properties we're putting out for sale or lease, that proposals like that would come through our process for sale or lease. So in terms of how the city would, would deal with that, with the Sheridan Green property, I'm not sure. But cert, but you all can't obviously authorize a charter school as a city. They would have to come to our district or to the state for authorization, if it was a new school.
And, and has the board done any outreach to charter schools to see if there's interest?
You know, I, I will say, the reason we had to close schools is because we have too many seats. We had seats for 96,000 students and we serve 68,000. Our objective is not to create more seats for students because it just exacerbates our problem of small schools. So creating or adding another school to the district is, is not a priority of ours, at least not the staff. And it's not a priority that the district has expressed. In fact, we're probably not done closing schools. So it's just the reality of where we are from a demographics perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you for the presentation and for joining us. I'd say personally, it's sad because I'm alumni of Witt. Is all of my children are alumni of Witt. And I know that there's big concern around what's gonna be done with that building because it's in the middle of our neighborhood. So one thing that I've heard, being a longtime resident, is we've seen cycles in our neighborhood of, you know, people who come and go and then you see more kids and less kids. So is that something that the district is, as you decide what you're gonna do long-term with these properties where potentially you might sit on some of them? Are you pretty sure that you're not planning on using these in perpetuity? Or have you really thought that, that far through with it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we were able to consolidate every school into another school that was 3.5 miles away or less. And so ultimately, we have, the, the state demographer sort of assures us that we're never going to need the number of properties we had that were built in the baby boom and, and other, like more robust times for children. You guys have seen the presentation too. So you sort of know what's happening with this, with the cycle of, and that fewer children are being born. And so even when people are having families, that kind of thing. So I think that there are, I mean, certainly, there may be properties that we hang on to and we lease instead of sell. And so those are things that will, we will evaluate. I also want to say thank you for mentioning, I mean, this is a really, was a really tough thing. And I know it's still a tough thing. And we are committed to ensuring that we look after the properties that we have and even if they're vacant. So our security will continue to patrol and work in concert with the Westminster police. And we will also, we're mounting more external cameras where needed and we'll continue to have those monitored through our security center. The alarms inside the buildings will still be armed, both for fire and, and entrance. And so we're still, and we'll, the grounds will continue to be kept up as well.
I, I appreciate all that. And I have seen from the state demographer, as far as the, the data, I just, you know, I say never say never because that, those schools, both Lucas and Witt, had a ton of, what are they, the temporary units when, when I was a student there, which was many, many years ago. Not gonna tell you how many, but far enough ago. But it, it does concern me because, I mean, once you, you change the use to something else, then it's changed. So, and I guess my only ask is moving forward, and this is both for staff and, and the district, is to be kept in the loop about Witt. Cause I certainly get a lot of questions just because I live a stone's throw away from it. So plus, if it wasn't for Witt, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. Cause my start was as a PTA president, which if you want dirty politics, go run one of those.
[laughing]
But that being said, I certainly have had a lot of parents reach out to me about, about that property. So I certainly am interested. And as we know more, I would appreciate knowing about it. So.
Absolutely.
And again, thanks for being here tonight at this late hour.
Thank you.
For me, I am a Sheridan Green resident from 45 years. And actually was a catalyst for getting it built because I told area superintendents, they weren't moving 18 more the mobiles in because we had first and second grade on the dry property. They were gonna add kindergarten and third and fourth. And I said, I will have a human chain when that, they'll start coming in. You will not do it. They called off the dogs, put in a bond issue, and we have what we have today. But yes, the residents are on top of Sheridan Green because it is a smaller site. And so I spent most of my weekend filtering calls. They've been coming. They know they can call anytime. I said, I'm not, send me your questions. I'm, I'm okay with asking whatever or giving suggestions. So, and I know on this one, it will go to the city of the suggestions for the use of it. But you answered the question. They're really concerned about the property's closing. Who's gonna monitor? They don't wanna see graffiti. They don't wanna see vandalism. They don't want to see all of that happen. They, these residents, the one that called me last night has been here 35 years. And she lives straight across the street and said, you know, I know what happens in the parking lot at night. I know, she watches everything. I said, we need your eyes and ears more than ever with this transition. And she promised she has the police department on speed dial. So the, the real things, they're, they didn't know how they were going to be interacting and how they're gonna be talked to. I had sent them what city manager Freitag had sent to me with what he knew of the process. So that's what's been circulating. And I'm sure many of them are listening tonight. The suggestions they had for staff, just because I said I would say it. So I, as the new things come in, I can forget these. The tennis court outside is disastrous. Fix the one side and make the other pickleball. We've already heard many suggestions about that before the closing ever hap, was talked about. On the inside, they would love it to be a library. They would love with all those classrooms to see intergenerational things that, that neighborhood could do. Other people could come in, do different things. They had some great ideas. One, one woman, and I said, I don't, I'm not ashamed to say you want, she wants the $1,000 massage chairs, hot tub. And she really would love a pool in there. But I said, you'll go to park, mini bar and your, your beer tab thing. No, I told her she'd have to go to the rec center for her swimming. So anyway, the big thing, I saw that people, you have to vote twice. With this, the Sheridan Green being what it is, is that, that going through the same process or is it a given it's, it's reverting?
It's reverting.
Okay. So that's a done deal. Okay. That's good to know. So they will look forward to learning conversations when they can have their thoughts viewed. But they've got some, some great thoughts. They care. And even they know that as the older people are moving out, younger ones are there. And there's hardly anyone that takes a newborn until they can get into a preschool type situation. So they even suggested having, cause I know those kindergarten rooms are huge, having even that offered at that area. So they have, I, I can't wait to hear all of their suggestions and thoughts. And I know Tomas will love working with all of that. So they're concerned, but they just didn't know the process. So I think this helps them tonight with that. And with our other ones, I too wondered how, if you're trying to dispose of it, where's the catch 22 of do they, can they come to us to see first if we would accept that use or, or is, so that somebody doesn't buy something that they can't redo?
Sure. Sure. So I, I would say the greatest control is the zoning of the property. So public, quasi-public use is pretty limited. You know, it'd be something compatible, comparable with a school.
Right.
And Lisa, I know you mentioned it during your presentation, but about potentially if maybe there's not a bidder or if the city would like to bid on something, there might be an opportunity there. I don't know if you wanna touch on that.
Sure. I mean, part of the work that CRL is gonna help us with is understanding what, what the city's interests might be. And I also think that, you know, a part of this process, at least as we envision it, is that it, as, as, we would probably have somebody advising our advisory committee and also able to talk to potential buyers and lease, more buyers probably, about potential for rezoning, if that, if that's something that they were interested in. And so they, so they would have to be advised. And of course, we won't, they, these folks know that stuff way better than us in terms of what it takes to work with the city to get your project done. So, you know, if someone envisions using it for something else. And certainly, if, if the city wanted to, you know, propose something as, I think what we've tried to say is that we're, we want to be open and transparent about the proposal process so that the community can, can weigh in. And so, but again, I'm not, we, we, that's sort of what CRL is here to help us with too, is understand the interests that you all may have.
Thank you.
Councilor Emmens?
Sorry. It's just triggered a thought. I, I know that Sheridan Green is in the purview of city Westminster. And I know that Zurgar and Witt are in Jeffco's, Jeffco Public Schools category of ownership per se. In one of my meetings with North Metro Arts Alliance, I don't know if it's an internal discussion with staff or whether they've reached out to the school district, but they had mentioned that they are looking at ways to commemorate, to commemorate the sites. And I, I'm super supportive of that because whether it's through a community mural or something that has a remembrance of the tenure of the schools in the community, I am also biased and support this because Sheridan Green, I completed K through to six at Sheridan Green. So I would absolutely love that just personally. But I think it would be a meaningful, a meaningful thing for the community to have, just because it's been there 20-plus years, each of these schools, maybe even longer. So not to date myself or anything. But yeah, if, if we're still having those conversations, I would love that to still continue with our school district to maybe commemorate these sites for the community.
So we actually have engaged through our school board president in a partnership with Red Rocks Community College. And there are unity murals, that's the word I'm looking for, that are going into each of the welcoming schools. That is a combination of art from, so it'll be a combination of art from Sheridan Green and Ryan, it's Ryan. I'm, I'm sorry, it's late. I can't remember everything. But this, so the schools that are welcoming the students, they're doing a joint art project and we'll be happy to invite you all. We're also having commemorative events at each site. This, this start, they, some of them have already started. So we're happy to keep you posted on those if you'd like to attend them as well.
Don't see any other questions. Thank you so much. And I'm sorry, it's the late night, but thanks for hanging in with us.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you so much to our principals, our school principals and our families for, for the support of their schools and their community. And we could, we will continue to have a very strong presence in Westminster. So thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.